Good morning. Welcome to the last Board of Supervisors meeting for 2020. And we will be going into closed session and we'll reconvene again at nine o'clock, an open session. If anyone would like to participate, you can get the Zoom information on the front page of the board's agenda. Ma'am Clerk, could you please read the closed session items? Thank you.
Yes. Closed session item number one, conference with labor negotiator, confer with accounting business coordinator, labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organizations, Calaveras County Public Safety and Work Association, WSHF Association, and Terrorist Management of the Union. Item number two.
Item number two, Public Employment Health and Human Services Agency Director, Public Works Director. Item three, conference with legal counsel, confer with counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation, one case.
Is there any public comments on any of these closed session items?
I do not see.
I do not see any at this time.
Thank you. We will adjourn into a closed session and we'll reconvene at nine o'clock. Welcome to the last Board of Supervisors meeting. Could you, if you can, please stand and -- Mr. Mills, will you do the pledge for us, please?
I would speak here. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will be continuing closed session items at the end of the board meeting today in the interim. Is there any public comments on the closed session items?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm just trying to get him through.
In the interim, if anyone would like to zoom in on the meeting, if you go to the Board of Supervisors' agenda, it is on the front page. Thank you.
Good morning.
There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm not sure who's there. I'm doing this telephonically this morning. I'm limited to resources and what I can do right now. I'm walking around. You have items number two.
Could you identify -- did you want to identify yourself?
No, I'm fine with not identifying myself.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Closed session, you know, we've gone through a number of people in these positions, and I'm always hearing the same thing from department heads when they leave, and that is they want to be closer to family. Please ask them if they're close enough to family next time you interview one of these people. Number three, agenda, number three on the closed session, potential litigation. You have two items on the consent agenda that are potential, that there could be potential litigation on. Number nine, where you have Wendy Alt, who might be, I'm not sure, a relative of Albert Alt, and I see that he signed off on this, a conflict of interest. And number 11, which if Ben Stopper doesn't recuse himself on, even though it is not direct, there's an SEIU conflict, in that there is either downward or upward pressure on wages when you tie one unit, bargaining unit, or group of people to a bargaining unit. And he has a wife that is represented by the SEIU, and I believe he's represented by the SEIU, and he shouldn't be dealing with such matters. I want to say wonderful things about, later on in general public comment, about our board chair, who really kept things together this year, and I'll do that hopefully at that time. So, on with the meeting, on, let's rock and roll. Take care.
Thank you. Are there any staff announcements this morning?
Yes, Ben, Madam Chair, this is Peter Mauer. I'd like to make the announcement. And I'd like to share a screen and do a quick tutorial about how to access the information. We recently posted the proposed zoning map update that brings the zoning into conformance with the general plan, as well as replaces all of the interim zones, the unclassified and highway service zone parcels. So I'm going to do a quick screen share here. Where'd it go?
Can we get the cursor off of those?
Don't. Well, I'm unable to find the screen that I wanted to share, so I'll just say that if you go to the planning department webpage, on the top menu at the top of the screen, it says zoning, there are directions of how to access the information, and it says zoning map, help, you can click on that to walk through the information. If you click on zoning map, it will show, it will bring you up to the GIS layer that we have, it shows all of the general plan zoning, the proposed zoning information. It's a little bit non-intuitive just because of the nature of the GIS, but if people have questions, they can certainly call our department and ask for help to walk through it. If any of the board members have questions, I'm happy to work with you on that as well. Do you have any questions at this point?
Are there any questions of Mr. Mauer? Or comments? Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Jim McCargill with Integrated Waste Managed. I just wanted to provide an update to the board on a recent regulatory change regarding treated wood waste. Treated wood waste is most commonly fence posts, sill plates, landscape timbers, guardrails, decking, patio posts, railroad ties, telephone poles. Effective January 1st, 2021, this material can no longer be landfilled. It has to be sent to a special hazardous waste landfill, which is referred to as a Class I landfill. To my knowledge, right now, there's only one landfill in the state that's accepting this material. This is going to have a significant impact to Calaveras County, and I just wanted to make the board aware of this change, and we are working on what options might be available to us. I will tell you that most of our neighboring counties have already begun to reject accepting the material and have offered no options to their communities. I'm trying to come up with some sort of option, but at the minimal, it will have a significant impact to our residents.
Thank you. So is there any, Mr. Mills?
Yes, Jim, good morning. Does this mean taking it down to Kettleman City?
No, it is not accepted at Kettleman City. The only landfill that I'm available for disposal of this material is called Button Willow in Kern County. And so currently, we charge $8 a cubic yard to receive this material at our gatehouse at Rock Creek Landfill, and we dispose of it in the landfill. That's no longer allowed as of January 1st. The cost, I've got some initial costs, and I can tell you, it's probably not exaggerating at least 20 times that cost that we're charging. So this is going to be a pretty major change.
And additionally, on a Class I like that, I bend to Button Willow. This is an ongoing cost. This isn't going to be dispose of it here and forget about it. We're going to continue to pay that cost. Is that correct?
That's true.
So I just want everybody to understand, just because we take it down there doesn't mean that amount of solid waste that we pushed in that landfill isn't going to be a year-over-year cost. So keep it in mind. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Stopper.
Let me follow up with the question. Most of the surrounding counties in Northern California, Kerns so far away, are rejecting this. So as far as we know, these are ending up being piles in people's yards.
Right. And the concern I have is that if we entirely reject accepting it at the Rock Creek landfill, we will see this material piling up on the road sides and out in fields and ditches. There's a real potential for this material to be disposed of. And then, and I'll remind you that as of January 1st, it is considered a full hazardous waste material, so it has to be responded to as a hazardous waste cleanup.
Also, we've known for quite some time that this was coming to a head for 2021, correct?
Well, there was actually a bill, a state legislature bill was passed in November, just last month, and sent to the governor that would have fixed this issue and prevented this issue. Governor Newsom vetoed it and rejected it. So there was, up until just a few weeks ago, hope that this situation would not occur. I'm told that there's going to be some legislation rushed through again to try and fix this situation, but knowing the way the state works, this could take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, no, they won't, they won't be back by the end of the year in session. But with that said, you know, I appreciate you bringing up the fix that was bypassed by the governor, but what my question proceeds, how long has this been legislated so that it was coming to a head in 2021? Five, six years, a decade?
Well, yeah, actually, to my knowledge, it could be even 10 or 20 years ago that the original treated wood waste regulations went into effect, and it always had that January 1st, 2021 date in it. It was always looked at as being so far down the road, and we were always told that there would be a fix put in place, that honestly, I think a lot of people just expected January 1st, 2021 to not be an issue, but it's here and it's an issue.
And the reason I'm asking this is for years, there's been a lot of things coming ahead with our solid waste and integrated waste as we move forward, and things are coming ahead now. And in the next couple of years, there's much more coming to a head. So please keep us updated as we proceed. Thank you.
For sure.
Mr. Tuffinelli.
Yeah, so this is all treated wood products?
This is all treated wood products, and yeah, there's quite a list of the materials.
So my question is, is it going to be still legal to sell and purchase these products after January 1st?
Yeah, unfortunately, you're getting to the root of the problem. The manufacturers and the retailers still will sell these materials, and that's the problem. The problem becomes when it's no longer needed and it's a waste material, and like a lot of these issues, the responsibility inevitably falls upon the local government, and that's a key problem with these type of issues.
Unfortunately, I think you hit the nail on the head about finding it along all the roadways, but the other issue is that may end up in burn piles, simply being deposed by residents in their burn piles.
That's true.
I don't think any of that was thought about before this legislation, especially continuing to sell it. So, thank you.
Mr. Gueramendi, has RC RC taken any position on this?
Madam Chair, I believe that Jim is a member of the ESJPA.
That's correct.
And so, yes, they've been working on that.
So maybe this is one of the things where the board wants to write a letter.
Well, the good news, Madam Chair, is that we have some very large counties surrounding us, and including some very, very large counties like Los Angeles, that have construction booms going on. Everybody knows you're going to, you don't use a full board, there's a lot of waste. And so where we think we've got a problem, they've got an enormous problem. So I'm not so sure we need to be on the team, but I don't know if we need to be a lead blocker.
Got it. Okay.
And Madam Chair, if the board were interested in potentially doing that, we could certainly agendize that for a later meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I got that message. I read between the lines. Thank you. Are there any other, thank you, Jim, appreciate it. I don't know why we say we appreciate it. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Are there any other staff comments?
No.
Are there any other public comments on the staff comments?
None at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move to item four, public health update. Hello, Ms. Stranger.
Hello.
I gather this is your last meeting with us.
It is. And am I allowed to take this off right here?
Whatever's comfortable for you.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kristin Stranger, Health and Human Services. I have not been here for quite a while, so it's lovely to see you all in person. So today, I'm going to be providing the update on COVID-19.
Excuse me, just a minute. What, Gary?
The lights are out, she's in the dark.
Oh.
Great. Thank you.
I didn't want you to be in the dark.
Whatever, wherever, I'm good, as long as I get to provide the update. Thank you. I also have invited Mark Twain Medical Center CEO Doug Archer to the meeting. He can provide an update, an additional update on impacts to the local hospital. So to begin with some introductory figures, effect for today, 12/15/2020. As of December 14th, 2020, statewide numbers for COVID-19 confirmed cases were at approximately 1.5 million cases and approximately 21,000 deaths statewide. Here in Calaveras County, as you saw on our Friday report out, which we do Tuesdays and Fridays, we had 642 confirmed cases, 84 active cases, and 22 fatalities. Again, we will be reporting out this afternoon with additional updates and numbers as we have continued to process case investigations as well as additional contact tracing. We continue to see the steady rise of COVID-19 cases in our community as well as statewide. And so again, you will hear me echo the messages that I have said since the very beginning, that the mitigation efforts and the mitigation measures we have been communicating of staying home, distancing, hand washing, and other types of things continue to be just as important as they have been, particularly as we continue to move through this surge. Calaveras County continues to be under the regional stay-at-home order, which is, went into effect on December 6th at 11:59 PM. We are amongst a number of counties who are subject to this regional health, regional stay-at-home order, which comes as a measure to address the increased ICU or intensive care unit capacity that has been impacted due to COVID-19 hospitalizations. The way that the regional stay-at-home order works is that when the region itself falls below 15% of ICU capacity, the efforts, the mitigation efforts that go into effect, such as increased measures to reduce spread, also go into effect. Just to give some perspective of where we are as a region, we have been hovering at about 1% ICU capacity over the past few days. So at this point, I'm going to stop because Doug Archer can provide much more detail about what our local hospitals are seeing, and then I will return back to a number of updates. Doug?
Thanks, Kristin. Good morning, everyone. So we're in a little better spot than the rest of our friends in our San Joaquin region. So we have an eight-bed ICU here at Mark Twain Medical Center, and we have three patients in our ICU. So that gives us roughly 60, I think 63% bed availability for ICU. Our hospital census overall, including MedSurg, is 15. It's still very busy. That's almost double what our normal volume would be, but we do have the ICU bed availability. We also have only one ventilator in use, so that gives us access to seven additional ventilators if needed. Our emergency room is seeing increased volume as well. Year-to-date, they're about 20% above our normal volume. Yesterday, we saw 38 patients, and 17 of them in the ED, 17 of them were here for COVID-related symptoms or concerns. So our average volume for the ED would be about 30, 31 patients. We saw 38 yesterday. We're also, this week, with encouragement from our friends at CDPH, we started offering employee testing. So we started that actually today. And then, of course, the big news is the vaccine, so we're working through our plans to provide the vaccine to our frontline staff as soon as we receive it. Those are the highlights. I bid I answer any questions.
Mr. Mills?
I do have a question, Doug. Regarding interhospital transfers, are they limiting those right now?
You know, it's definitely more challenging to transfer a patient right now if you're, you know, if you're trying to send them to an impacted area. Sacramento, Stockton, both pretty impacted. We are able to get pretty creative and ship patients as far as we need to ship them to get the service they need, but I can tell you, our transfer times are definitely extending a lot longer than they used to be.
Doug, are you going as far south as Emmanuel down there in Turlock?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've transferred even further than Emmanuel.
Okay. That's, that just seems to be one of the challenges that you're facing, even though you may have the capacity here, the care, the care facilities, the trauma centers, et cetera, limited in what they can take from you.
Yeah, we've had situations where, you know, bigger trauma centers are, you know, they've got 100, 110 patients waiting for beds already. So it's definitely a challenge. And we're actually been in the unique position here at Mark Twain to receive transfers. Generally, we send them out. We don't accept them, so interesting times.
Thank you for noting, because that's not been a normal procedure of receiving transfers. So are you getting any transfers out of Tuolumne County or Amador?
No, we haven't from there yet. We've taken a couple patients from Stockton in the past, but we haven't received any from Tuolumne or Anglos, either.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Stranger, please, go ahead.
So moving on to my last statewide update, many community members have likely noticed their phones pinged recently. There has been a new update, excuse me, a new initiative rolled out from the state, a statewide tool for smartphones that is designed to slow the spread of COVID-19 by providing users who opt-in to notifications for individuals they may have come in contact with who have tested positive for COVID-19. The program itself is called CAL-NOTIFY. Further information is provided on the CDPH website. This is a fairly new initiative that has recently been rolled out and will continue to be enhanced. So moving on to local updates. So as I foreshadowed last week during our weekly update, excuse me, our regular COVID-19 update during board supervisors' meetings, our team at Calaveras Health and Human Services' Public Health continues to work diligently to secure additional testing for our community. Two initiatives that are on the very close horizon include working to secure a minimum of one day of testing here by the state mobile testing site. So I'm talking about the state-run initiative, a mobile testing site that they are utilizing to facilitate providing service to a number of counties in our region. So we're working to obtain one day a week. Those details have not been solidified just yet, but as soon as they are, we will message our community. In addition, our public health team has been diligently advocating at the state to obtain additional testing kits so that we can provide our own testing to our community in a mobile fashion, beginning in San Andreas and moving out to communities throughout our county that are, have not had access as much so to local testing. So as soon as we are in receipt of those kits, we will move into that testing very quickly. We are ready to go. We just need the kits themselves. In addition, Doug had began to speak a little bit about the other large-scale initiative that we're engaged in, which is the vaccinations. I'm very pleased to report that we intend to receive our first round of vaccinations at the end of this week. As I mentioned last time, there will be a tier system for the rollout of the vaccinations that begins first with our first frontline healthcare workers, skilled nursing facility staff and residents, and of course EMS first responders. We have been, we anticipate to receive over 400 doses of vaccination through the Pfizer distribution, and then, as you've probably seen in the news as well, we anticipate to receive other rollouts of vaccinations as we move into the response phase of the pandemic, which moves into vaccinations. We are not at the point yet where we will be doing mass vaccinations for community members. We look forward to that. We have plans associated with that, but again, we are following the statewide criteria for distribution and rollout through a tiered system. Moving further into that, okay. Lastly, statewide, another initiative which we are working through here, through Calaveras Public Health, is that we have received, as of yesterday, new guidance from California Department of Public Health on quarantine. So we are looking at our epidemiological practices and taking that new guidance on quarantine and isolation and making those modifications under the consultation of our local health officer, Dr. Beadie. Key messages, again, I want to leave as I conclude and begin to answer, which is likely a number of questions. The measures, they still remain extremely important, especially as we move into the holiday season. Everyone is encouraged to continue to keep distance from others that are not in their household, wash your hands, wear your face covering, and make sure that you're staying home if you're sick. Those measures continue to be the most effective preventative measures, and we encourage our entire community to continue to engage in them. At this point, I will pause. Mr. Archer or myself can take any questions.
Mr. Stopper.
Thank you for the work, for bringing the testing into the county. I brought up last week that on a four-to-five-day wait in Tuolumne County, thank you for checking up on that, Kristin. I also found out that the wait had been longer in Amador County, and it's a, it's a testing issue that's predominating this time throughout California. It wasn't specifically focused on Calaveras County as I may have alluded to last week. So, you know, thank you for stepping up and trying to get testing here and facilitating that. Also, when they did regionalization, had my, you know, I'm going to have a myriad of questions in here with it, because originally, they said they were going to do that, and then if you stay, if you're a direct county after regionalization, had that 15% ICU capacity or larger, then they would be considering us in, I believe, three weeks to possibly move off as a county and not as an entire region. Are we still within those confines right now of how the state's mandating the process on getting out of local closures?
Thank you, Supervisor Stopper. I'll take those questions in part. So first, thank you for the recognition of the efforts to engage more testing. We do need additional testing here. And I did, you know, as we worked to secure that additional testing, I wanted to remind everybody on the front page of our COVID-19 webpage, you can find the most local resources in addition to contacting one's primary care provider. So again, using this as an opportunity to communicate that there are testing resources currently available in Sonora, Lodi, Modesto, and Jackson. Yes, the issues you just highlighted about wait times continue to be a concern, and that we will continue again to advocate for additional testing, and we are getting very close to securing that. In terms of regionalization, the way that the regional stay-at-home order works is you go on as a region, you come off as a region, but you go back to whatever tier your individual county itself was assigned. So for instance, I believe when we went on as a region, Mariposa County was in the red tier. So when we come off as, and they're part of our region, so when we come off as a region, they will return to the red tier, they won't automatically go to a purple like we are currently in. So I understand the confusion around that, but that is, that's the response for us as work.
Okay. And that's good to know. I know Mariposa's on here. I've, you know, talked to individual supervisors down there. They, you know, being another small county, they're in a good position. Well, not a good position, none of us are in a good position right now. They're in a better position than, let's say, San Joaquin, another county. They're in a better position than, let's say, San Joaquin, another county. So, you know, something the doctor brought up earlier, and I do want to say this out loud, is while we were moved into a region and were brought to this moment, it's not necessarily the numbers of Calaveras and the positive, I mean, it's to be disconcerting, but it's the surrounding counties such as San Joaquin County that have such extravagant numbers that makes it, you know, that brings us to the point that we're in today. You know, if it was separated by county, we wouldn't necessarily be in the same boat as San Joaquin County, although, you know, our numbers have extensively moved up. I watched a statement by James Gore yesterday. He had a lot of good points, you know. I don't always see eye to eye with him, but he's a good supervisor from one of our northern California counties. And, you know, he's, you know, dealt with a lot of things up in, it's Sonoma County, right? Such as fires and everything, and they've had a lot of issues that Calaveras has had to go through. He brought up some good points, that the tools that California is using aren't necessarily the best tools, but they're the tools that they have at their disposals for moving through these times. You know, it would be better if we could pinpoint which businesses were, but we don't have the ability to say this business is a hotspot for passing on COVID, you know. It's literally almost an impossibility. So, the state's using more of a mallet approach instead of a precise approach. I just, I want everyone to keep that in mind. As we move forward, you know, I've spoken out against the closing of businesses. I'm still, you know, someone that feels strongly that, you know, there's a lot of negative things happening with the way we're doing this, but at the same time, we can be proactive. I personally support mask-wearing and, you know, and everyone being proactive to help out our community as we move forward. So, I just want to make that clear, you know, that, you know, that, look, nothing to say that COVID-19 has been detrimental to our businesses, our livelihoods. I mean, and I don't, there's no pure solution to this, but, you know, we need to remain united as a community going forward, and if we can help anybody out in our community as we move forward, please do so. We're going into Christmas, and some people may not believe in it. Personally, I do. You know, there's a lot of people out of work right now. I'll repeat what I said during last meeting. A lot of people that are laid off of work right now because the forced closures used up their UI or unemployment benefits at the beginning of this year. There's no $1,200 check coming in the mail. The stimulus isn't talking about adding to unemployment benefits right now that they're putting forward. PPP loans for businesses have been exhausted. There's no reprieve right now. So, we can talk about those in the future, but, you know, until something else comes along, these people are hurting. So, you know, if there's anyone in the community that's still able to keep their head above the water throughout these times, please think about your fellow individuals that aren't as fortunate as the rest of us.
Sorry about the editorial, Madam Chair.
Your prerogative, Supervisor. Are there any other comments? I have one. Mr. Stoppard brought it up, you know, on businesses, and we don't want businesses to close and all that. I mean, I'm sure every city council member and every county supervisor in the state are saying the exact same thing. But what I want to know, is there that any wiggle room on behalf of the board that we can modify the stay-at-home order? For example, we could say restaurants, hospitality, that, you know, you can do outside, but the tables have to be 10 feet apart versus six feet apart, or that you can only have two people at a table unless they're in the same household. I mean, is there any wiggle room anywhere that we could do so that it really doesn't impact us in terms of our ability to be part of the solution for the region and any impact the state might have on us as a county? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the authority of the local health officers throughout the state of California allows for them to make decisions and impose requirements that are more restrictive than the state guidance, not less restrictive. So, what you are outlining, as I am understanding it, would be a request to evaluate if there's the potential to decrease the restrictions below that of the state, and the answer is no.
Yes, like getting my haircut.
Yes, which is not allowable currently in the regional stay-at-home order, the personal services. So, no, that is not under the authority of local health officers. They only have the ability to do more restrictions and not less.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes. Ms. Reilly, I don't think is within your realm, but Assemblyman Bigelow did mention that there are some people who applied for unemployment benefits in March, and this is December, and they can't seem to get a hold of their local unemployment office or the state office to get a response. Still haven't received checks. These people are beyond hurting. If the state wants to lock us down this way, they need to be sure that those people are not put in a system where they're desperate, where they're literally scrapping for the next meal, and their families, and I'm talking about the kids, et cetera. You know, growing up, when you were in poverty, you didn't know you were in poverty because that's just the way it was. But I think the state really needs to get serious about getting these unemployment benefits that have been applied for and are due and owing paid to these people on a timely manner. Eight to nine months is absolutely unreasonable and unthinkable. We have businesses here that laid people off simply because they couldn't keep their doors open, and like Supervisor Stoppard said, they could still go to Lowe's and Home Depot and every other place around. That's just kind of, there's no equality here. There's no fairness in how this is being implemented amongst the various businesses. If we were all on the same playing field, all doing it the same way, that's understandable. But literally, right now, in the state, we are not, and it's unfortunate that so many people are taking a direct hit. I know of people who are dipping into their retirement funds right now to try to survive and waiting for the state to come up with that unemployment check or whatever it might be. When you're 52 to 55 years old, that is a really hard decision to make. So, we're changing people's futures here with these decisions, and the sooner the state can find those solutions and get us back to functioning in an economy, the better it's going to be for everybody. The tensions are very high, and the desperation is very high. When people are desperate, they do desperate things, and that's very unfortunate. So, thank you for your work. Enjoy where you're going. I'm sure it's going to be a new challenge for you. So, appreciate your time here.
I am going to, is there anything else, Ms. Stranger?
I have no additional updates.
Okay. I am going to ask for public comments, but I'd like you to stay. Mr. Stoppard?
I just, you know, something I was talking to, and I think I more made a statement, but I would like you to confirm. You know, our numbers in Calaveras County, you know, yes, we have a lower population, but when it comes to percentages on statistics, we are in a far better situation as opposed to a majority of the people that have been put into our region, much less the state.
Supervisor Stoppard, are you referring to ICU capacity? Are you referring to our overarching numbers?
Yeah. Let's say ICU capacity, positivity rate, I mean, these all go hand in hand overall. So, I mean, not, we're not doing, you know, I don't want to say better, because this whole situation isn't better, but ours aren't as bad as a majority of the other population inside our region, much less the state.
I would actually disagree with that statement. ICU capacity, you just heard from Mr. Archer, so yes, you were very correct in that statement. But in terms of our case rate, our testing positivity rates, our, those types of rates, those actually were very much in purple tier amongst the, amongst the, and I just saw our data even the other day. We're across-the-board purple, purple tier. So, you know, we, our numbers aren't, earlier on, we said that a lot more, right? That was probably a much more accurate statement earlier on, but I think that we've, with our increased cases, we have moved to more of the general standard, which is not a great thing. But, you know, what's beautiful about Calaveras is this community pulls together and can, just like we did when we moved into the yellow tier, right? That was a very positive. We know, we have the tools at our disposal. We have great support in this community, and I think that we can very much, as we move out of this regional stay-at-home order, which we will, right? We'll eventually get there, pull together to move us back into the red, orange, yellow, and progress. But at the current time, our numbers are not strikingly better than anybody's.
Oh, yeah, not strikingly, but, you know, everyone that moved into the purple tier pretty much at the same time across the state, for the most part, I mean.
Yeah. I think you're accurate. There are communities, particularly in Central Valley, yes, extremely.
Which is the majority of our region.
Our region, yeah. But statewide, looking at the numbers, we're pretty much in line with many of our.
Understood. Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mills?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Germandy.
Thank you. Since this is probably the last time we're going to get to see you, and I'm sure the Chair is going to go into this after a public comment, but I want to personally thank you for all the work that you've done. You were on this, you were in this county when I took on this job, and it has just been a pleasure to work with you over the last four years. You ran a great shop. You're a powerful, very competent leader and a really great person. When you get down to LA, don't unhook the car seats for the kiddos. If you get down there and say, "What was I thinking?", please turn around and come back. I'm sure we, as a board, would love to see you back here. So, not over till it's over, Kristen. You may not like LA. But thank you for all you've done for our county. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments?
Yes. First, we'd like to start with Kathy Galino.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board of Supervisors. Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. I just really want to share with folks that there are business resources out there on the county website, the COVID-19 county website. There's a tab called Businesses. Please click on there, because there's several grant programs that are going to be coming out from the governor's office. There's also a lot of loan programs for businesses in all different sizes, shapes, and forms, and the interest rates on most of these are very low, like 1%, and a long payback. And there's potential that some of these loans may end up being forgivable in the future for our businesses. So, please visit the county website on the Business Resource tab, and please feel free to call me anytime. I'm at 754-6742. You can email me and check out the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Yes. First, we have Terry McBride.
Fine, thank you. Ms. McBride?
Good morning. Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Director of New California State. I'm going to go ahead and say something a lot of us are thinking and not many people are saying. I'd say not much of this has to do with the virus. Do you know, 600-some-odd, we're still at .015% of Calaveras people haven't been tested positive, and there's so many false positives that are being proven to be false. So, we're at .015%. We're shutting our county. Our county is being forced to be shut down. This is all about control. While Newsom, the great pulse phenomenonist dictator himself, can go out to fancy restaurants with a huge group, no masks, we've all seen the pictures, and his kids go to private school, while our youngsters are failing because they're not in their normal school setting. You know, homeschooling, it's a special knack, and a lot of parents are trying to survive, and a lot of folks put their kids in public school because they don't feel they don't feel equipped to do the homeschooling. And as a homeschool mom myself, there's a lot of work to it. So, if you're trying to survive, plus make sure your kids are doing their schoolwork, well, that's a lesson to fail. We're seeing officials just snubbing their nose at us, doing everything they're telling us not to do. This is all about control. And last week, unfortunately, you guys made the poor choice of having a very nice lady escorted out of your chambers who actually had a mask on, was sitting far away from you guys with a plexiglass wall. So, that right there proves to me that you yourselves don't really even believe in the masks, because they don't work. All it is, is control. It takes away your private identity. It takes away your ability to speak up for yourself, and everybody is doing it. Not everybody, thank God. There's a lot of us that are saying, "No way, ain't going to happen." And, you know, they're saying these numbers are increasing. What happened to the flu? They're in the middle of flu season. I guess the flu just decided to become COVID. You know, we lose people to the flu every year, and I'd say at higher numbers than of this COVID. Why, you know, why are we just putting everything on COVID and shutting our businesses down? If you can't see this about controlling people, I don't know what to tell you. And what I'm going to ask again is, you guys, back up our constitution. You took an oath. Support your community. Stand for them. I know you're in a hot, you're in a very uncomfortable position, and I get that. But our constitution is powerful, and it's there for a reason. It's for times like this. And I would ask people to sit back and look at what's happening right now, and come out of the fear, take off those masks, and educate yourself, and find out how those tests are coming back as false positives. Find out about how it has a fairly, a fairly high cure rate.
Ms. McBride, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Yes, we have two more. Next is Vicki Renke.
Thank you. Ms. Renke?
Yes, hi, Vicki Renke, Angels Camp. You know, I'm listening to this updated report, and again, we find that what we've done here is to shut our businesses down. Our economy is hurting, and it doesn't seem that it's necessary. And it's very sad to see that we don't have a Board of Supervisors that stands up for their community. And I've said this before, and I'll continue to repeat it, that that's who you're supposed to be. You're supposed to represent the people. You should be fighting to make sure that our businesses, we, and I think Terry just said a few things that I believe to be true as well. And one of the things that we don't talk about, we talk about the people who died, and there was 22 cases that were reported. We know the majority was in the Avalon Nursing Home. We don't talk about the approximately, I guess there's 500 people who have recovered from COVID here in our county. We never hear about those people. One, were they given medications to help their illness? How many of them were really sick? How many were just tested positive but never came down with COVID? How many, you know, were needing hospitalization? So, we know that most people survive, and my understanding that I've heard is that there aren't medications being given to these patients when they're sick. They're just told to go home. So, how serious could this illness be if we do nothing for these people except send them home and tell them to go home and get better? So, anyway, I guess it's a couple of things here. One is, I hear Ben saying the right things, but I don't see him standing up to say, "Look, we've got to open this county. It's too critical for our community." So, anyway, I just wanted to bring those things up and ask the question if we could please have a report on those people who did survive the illness so that people have a better understanding. There are people that are fearful to walk out their front door, and that shouldn't happen. And our government shutting us down is control, and it's not right. We live in the United States of America, free country, and I think... And I think the people of California are pretty fed up with our governor and his demands. So for whatever it's worth, I hope that you reconsider maybe joining that resolution that was put out by Kevin Kiley and the Northern legislators. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Renke.
We have one more.
Please.
Okay. Carl?
I'm here. Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Stolten.
I'd like to thank Kristen Strange. And I, I have a place down in Marina Del Rey, which is an incorporated part of Los Angeles. So come on over for barbecue one of these days after the COVID's over. I'm up here in West Point right now, and I like staying at home. But, but yeah, I can see how on some people, it's a, it's a bit of a problem. But we have to look out for our fellow, our fellow citizens, our, our community, and the, and those that we love, and take every precaution to, to protect them. That's our, that's individually, we have to do that. And I'd like to thank the board members for stressing that. Their decisions that we have to make is, that, that we have to make alone, that the government can't do for us. Because, because of lack of enforcement, of course. But, but I'm very happy to see that the vast majority of people are taking, are taking this threat to their, to their health, to their community, to the livelihood of their, of their fellow, of their fellow citizens seriously. I don't have too much, I had a host of questions to ask, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think I'll do that this morning. I'm back at my desk right now. I was out walking a chewy little fella, the world's best beagle, when I talked to you last. And I'll be, be here for the rest of the meeting. Take care.
Thank you, Carl Stolten.
Talk to you, too.
Appreciate your comments. Any other public comments?
None at this time.
Okay, Ms. Stranger? Is there anything else that you might like to add?
To the COVID-19 update? No, not, I do not.
Okay. I have to say, on behalf of the board, we have truly appreciated the work you've done on this roller coaster ride that we're on, and will continue. And in addition, still keeping Health and Human Services going. We sort of forget that there's other departments that you've been responsible for, and Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, the, all the other, and Mental Health, Behavioral Health. So we really appreciate it. So the board asked something for you.
Oh.
This is for the frog job. I was a frog, yeah, a future frog. And this is because you're the jockey.
My future frog.
So you need to open that and share that. And truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I've never done good at the frog job. My frog has always been a little sad, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, you got to show the public and read the label so you'll understand. The label on, the label on the shirt.
Calaveras Health and Human Services, and it's got the beloved frog.
And what does the label on the shirt say? What kind of shirt is that?
Oh, it's a motherhood maternity shirt. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We so appreciate it, and will miss your calm demeanor during this very trying time for everyone, and being responsive to the board and to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve this wonderful community under your completely admirable leadership. I mean that from everything within. I, it has been an honor to serve with the local government partners, non-local government partners, that are, just do everything they possibly can to make sure that the, the residents and visitors of this community are served to the greatest extent possible. And I just want to extend gratitude to them, gratitude to you, gratitude to my team, who is absolutely amazing. Madam Chair, you've completely hit it on the head. This is not just COVID-19 impact in public health. There are so many other programs that have been impacted, social services programs, behavioral health programs. And to watch my colleagues at HHS A step up and do whatever is needed, it's been, it's, it's truly humbling. So thank you again for the opportunity. I, I've absolutely enjoyed and loved every second of, maybe not every second, but the overwhelming 99.9% of the, of the seconds that I've spent here serving this community. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stranger. Are you all doing fine? Do you need a break? Okay. We're going into recognition and acknowledgement. Is Mr. Pack available? He's supposed to be, okay. Let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you. I want to reconvene the meeting, please, and go to item five. This is recognition and acknowledgements, a Public Works item brought to us by our soon-to-leave Public Works Director. This is also his last meeting today. Mr. Pack, please.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Callaway and members of the board. I'm Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation. At least you got stuck with me for the rest of this month. This is one of the most exciting, and I'm really glad, is one of my last actions as your Director, giving the opportunity to share with you the results of our 2020 Employee Recognition and Awards Program. And I do want to highlight, I've provided handouts to the board for this, and they are, I, I think we're trying to coordinate the presentation online, but I'm going to move forward with the board to have those copies. And the copies of this have been distributed both through social media as well as through, as well as through press releases, and we'll have this information available on our website as well. So a little bit of background, next slide, please. A little bit about this program. This is the second year of our program. Last year, it was a pretty modest program. We, we had seven categories that we recognized staff. This year, we expanded it based on comments from our staff to nine categories. The two new categories were the Customer Service Employee of the Year and a Safety Award. I think especially things fitting in the, the season and where we're at today. A little bit about the background and how we determine the nominees and winners, that's not done by me. I help kind of administer the program. I help push it. But we create a steering committee made up of staff members from each of our divisions. And the goal of that is to fairly inequitably recognize peers in each of our divisions and have the folks with boots on the ground doing the, doing the, doing work of the people to have a say and have their input on who are, who we recognize. And I think that's a fitting tribute to have our staff make those recognitions instead of the managers or the director. This last year, we received 40 ballots. We have about, I think, 65-ish or so full-time positions, about 60 when you pull out the vacancies. And so the fact that we, despite the fact of COVID, the fact that we had a 67% rate, that represents a 48% increase in participation from last year, which I think is pretty amazing despite the challenges of COVID and the difficulties of coordinating that process. And one of the things I want to highlight is we had 48 employees that we recognized on our ballot. So at least 48 of our 60 or so employees were recognized by their peers at least on one ballot, which to me, again, recognizes that the vast majority of our folks, or our folks are just, they're doing a good job, and their peers recognize that. Next slide, please. So we had some challenges this year, and I, I don't need to go into COVID too much. But so last year this time, we had a wonderful luncheon. We, it was potluck. We all gathered together in our, in our fleet shop, and we, we recognized each other, and we harassed folks, and it was enjoyable. And this year, we can't do that, obviously. And so we did a, I reached out to my, to my managers. We talked about different ways. And we landed on a, a process where, similar to like professional sports franchises, we rolled out our awards, one or two at a time each day. We did it through emails, through press releases, social media. We did YouTube videos to announce the nominees and winners. And we found that metering in that way, it kind of created some anticipation and some excitement. And we got a lot of buzz, not only by our folks in our department, but also from the community, as we rolled this out in social media, and seeing a lot of the positive comments and feedback. It, it went really well, especially in light of the challenges that COVID has, has, has faced, that we faced. And I can speak both indirectly and directly through comments of the managers and staff that this has been a really big morale boost. And I think one of the most important things, one of the things that's easy to lose, is, you know, the, the staff and impacts on morale of trying to do work and the challenges we have at home and in the office. And we were very fortunate to have, to be able to continue to do work, and we recognize that. But that's still, we don't want to minimize the impacts on morale. And so this has had a, a significant impact in the positive on the morale of our staff. It is a positive program. We have two years of it. I know my team is excited about continuing this on, and I have full expectations that this will continue into the future. Next slide, please. And so the next number of slides, there are bullet points, so we'll recognize those. And our winner this year for the Creative Employee of the Year Award is Mike Jones. Mike Jones is one of our road workers. He actually was with us for a number of years, working in Marita's District, and left for a short period of time, came back, and then was promoted to our, our Butte Fire Road Crew as our, as our, as our foreman. Brings a lot of energy, a lot of passion. He is a burst of energy. And he's the guy in the morning, right in the morning, when everyone's kind of, you know, getting their cup of coffee and getting ready, he's ready to go. And he's a really fitting tribute, a fitting winner, and especially when you reflect on the work that was done in the Butte Fire area this year. A very fitting tribute for our enthusiastic employee of the year. Our other nominees, and we'll go through these one at a time. I'm not going to, so Amy Bearbaum's our administrations, who's one of the folks, when you call, she's one of the ones that answers. Another person here was Jennifer Herndon in Engineering, and then Tyler Sweet in Roads. And I like to tease Tyler. Tyler specifically gave directions not to recognize him. He did not want any recognition this year. And so fittingly, we had to do that, especially in front of you. Our next category, next slide, please, is our Creative Employee of the Year. And the winner this year is Brendan Ramundo in our Fleet Division. And I think it, it's a really good tribute because our road guys, when you think fleet and creativity, with some of our equipment and the things we have to do to keep them on the, on the, on the, on the roads, in particular, we have an aging and antiquated fleet. And I've shared that with you in prior meetings. But the ability of our fleet, in particular Brendan, to come up with creative solutions, to continue to keep the equipment out there, keep it operating at its, at as efficiently as possible, I think it's a really fitting tribute to recognize our fleet for the work they do. Other nominees for Creative Employee of the Year, including Chrissy Hayter in our Administrative Division, Cody Johnson in Engineering, Dan Bruckner in our Roads overseeing the Glencoe Crew, and John Mayer, John Meyer in our Roads Division. Our next category is our Dedicated Employee of the Year. And I, once you see the name, I don't think it's going to surprise you. It's Robert Pattinger, our Deputy Director in Engineering. And I can't think of a more fitting person to recognize who's more dedicated to advancing public works and cares about this county more than Robert Pattinger. Other nominees, they're all in our Roads Division, so Jason Perry in Roads, John Meyer, John Meyer in Roads, I keep messing that up, Scott Perry and Tyler Sweet. Next category is our Customer Service Award, and we have two winners this year for this category. Sarah Cunningham in our Administrative Division. She's pretty new. She's, she's, she's been here about a year, a little less than a year. She came in right when COVID hit, and so the challenge is being a front counterperson and try and provide service in a changing and evolving situation. She is such a burst of positive energy, I, I can't think of a better person to have responding to a resident or a customer than Sarah. Another person, the other person recognized as a winner is Deana McAfee in our Fleet Division. And she is, she's that linchpin in our Fleet Division, connecting our external customers and our internal customers to our, to our fleet guys. And she, again, a lot of smiles, lots of energy. She does a fantastic job. Other recognition includes Amy Bearbaum in Administration, Shawna Toller in our Administrative Division, and a name you've seen a few times, John Mayer in, in Roads. Our next category is our Safety Employee of the Year. And this has been a unique challenge this year because typically, we recognize, you know, our, our folks have a lot of dangerous jobs, fixing roads, mechanics, fixing vehicles. Those are inherently situations that are inherently more dangerous than sitting in front of a computer or answering phone calls. But with COVID, the recognition this year went to Amy Bearbaum in our Administrative Division. And she has really taken the bull by the horns in our response to COVID, our cleaning of our offices. We were recognized earlier as one of the leaders as far as the proactive measures we were taking place to protect our folks. And I think it goes, you know, knock on wood, we are one of the biggest divisions in, or departments in, in the county, yet we have not had a positive case yet. And so I am knocking on wood pretty, pretty heavily, but I think that goes to the commitment of all of our staff, and Amy has been one of our linchpins for that. So our other nominees include Mark Kenzelak in Admin, David Arce in Fleet, Dan Bruckner in Roads, and Dave Melandra, also in our Roads Division. The next category is my favorite category. It's the Rookie of the Year. And the reason it's my favorite is we get a lot of new faces and for the ability for them to come in and immediately contribute, not only expertise and experience, but also passion and energy. It's something that I really like recognizing. Our winner this year is Matt Carley in our Roads Division, and just a lot of positive feedback from the community. He has roots in the community, and he brings calm, he brings a positive attitude, and he's rubbed off on a really positive way on our teams. And so he's, he's very much appreciated. Other nominees for Rookie of the Year include Sarah Cunningham, Cody Johnson, and then two folks in our Roads area, Don Kellin and Kyle LaMaster. Our Supervisor of the Year this year recognizes Mark Kenzelak in our Administrative Division. And Mark is our business administrator, really, he's kind of a catch-all. A lot of the small stuff that doesn't necessarily have a direct role. He, he is a, he's a catch-all for the thing. He's been involved with COVID response, a lot of our administration and HR issues, our purchasing, a lot of that goes through him. And we have both our fiscal and our administrative staff that, that report to him, and they do a fantastic job, and he got a lot of positive comments and feedback from them. Other nominees include Jennifer Ellis in Engineering, Todd Kenyon in our Fleet Division, and Jason Perry in Roads. The next, we're, we have two more left. Our next one is Team of the Year. And again, I can make arguments that all of our teams, or each team can be, receive special recognition. Our Team of the Year, though, we have two winners. Engineering was one of the ones recognized this year. And I think when you look at the, the significant amount of projects that we delivered this year, especially on the construction side, Engineering was the back, was the one pushing that. And despite that fact, we lost our only licensed staff engineer right at the beginning of, of COVID. And so we have folks that have a lot of energy. They may not have the experience that other larger departments do, but they have the passion and they want to deliver projects. And that directly results in what we've been able to accomplish this year. Our other Team of the Year is the Butte Fire Road Crew. And we have done so much work in the Butte Fire area, and I, I, one of the most proud things I am, this time, last year, they had some of the worst roads in the county, and you can look there, and some of these roads are now some of the best roads in the county. And that, the Butte Fire Road Crews, a lot of the work to prep those work for construction was their hard work. And so rightfully so, they've been recognized. Other nominees include Administration, our Fleet folks in the Equipment Service Center, and then our Glencoe Road and our Jenny Lynn Road Crews. Both of those have done a lot of work this year, prepping roads and performing great work for our community. Our last award is our Employee of the Year Award, and I'm going to go through these names one at a time. Our first nominee is Josh Kenzelak in our Engineering Division. He was a nominee last year. And as our lead inspector and Public Works Analyst, he has a lot of contact with the public, and he has a lot of expertise, and definitely represents our best interests when dealing with the public. John, John Meyer in our Roads Division, been working in Jenny Lynn. He was our winner last year, and rightfully so, recognized again this year. Josh Foley is one of our road maintenance workers, and I want to highlight him in particular because when Jason Perry came down and became a Road Superintendent for three months while Scott, Scott Anderson was out, a lot of the responsibilities in the Arnold area fell to Josh Foley. And so despite the fact of not being a road supervisor, his ability to, to, to order and coordinate work and provide services to Arnold, while the, the traditional road supervisor was not there, is a testament to his work and his commitment to the county, and I think right, very rightfully so, recognized for his work by his peers. And then our fourth Employee of the Year nominee is Mike Jones, also in Roads. And I've talked a lot about Mike, but I just, I'm going to miss his energy, his passion, and his, how much he cares about Calaveras County. The last employee, the last award is our winner of the Employee of the Year. And this goes to Jason Perry in our Roads Division. For folks who don't know, Jason's been with us for a number of years. He's the Road Supervisor up in Marita's District in the Arnold and White Pines area. He's the road supervisor up in Marita's district in the Arnold and White Pines area. When Scott Anderson went out this year, he was asked to come down and take over the role of the interim road superintendent. And that was at a time when we were, our business and our operations were at an all-time high, trying to coordinate work, trying to get things done, coordinating with the public and their service requests. And when you look at all of our categories, whether it's enthusiasm, dedication, customer service, I think all of those are incorporated in Jason Perry. And I have real high hopes that he's going to continue to contribute to our organization for many years to come. He is an incredible asset and I can't thank him enough for the work he's done this year. And so that is our results of our Employee of the Year Award. Again, I'm really proud of our team. We've done a lot of amazing work in the last couple of years. And it's a great opportunity to recognize the work that they've done with you and with the public. And with that said, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have comments they want to make to Mr. Stoffer?
I just want to say, I watched some of your YouTube videos that you put out. You've, over the last couple of years, you've not only done an excellent job of employee motivation, employee empowerment, and other things, you've got them to buy in on it. And that's, it's a testament to how you've been able to motivate Public Works and move forward in a direction that's been successful, Josh. And I just want to thank you for that. You know, it's a template for other people to look at moving forward when it comes to getting your employees enthusiastic about their job and just ultimately providing the best service to the public, which they deserve.
No, I appreciate that, Supervisor. And I want to say that it goes both ways. The investment, asking for excellence and asking for the level of service that they provide requires an investment. Investment in time, investment in effort, and investment in knowing that I'm going to do what I can to support them, whether it's through projects, programs, equipment, whether it's having their back when things go the wrong way. And it goes both ways. As much as I've given, then I'd like to think I've gotten in return from them. And so the work we can't do, and we've done a lot of work, I can't recognize enough the role that they've played in that. There's no way I'm up here and talking about success without them. And so, and they're certainly the unrecognized folks. And this is a small way to, you know, to recognize the contributions they make, but each and every day, and we talked about it before, you know, in a major snowstorm, they're on 24 hours' notice. And the winter storms from 2019, 41 straight days of 24-hour-a-day shifts to make sure the roads stayed open, the roads were safe, the ditches were clear, flooding was at a minimum. And that's not, they can, that's a testament to them caring about the county. They care about Calaveras County, they care about their peers and their neighbors. And most of these folks can go elsewhere and make more money, whether Tygerd or Granite Construction, they can go, there's more money else, but they love the county and they want to contribute. And again, it's, this little small tribute is a small part of my appreciation that I can show them and what they do for us.
Mr. Guaramendi.
Thank you. And Josh, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. The way, you know, when I came on board four years ago, after the Butte Fire, the first two years were just chaos. And it was, it was very difficult, both for the community, for Public Works. And I feel like the last two years, when you're under your tenure, things came to order and your team executing beautifully. I mean, the work you did in the Butte Fire, the compassion and understanding you showed to a community that was suffering, and you'd listen to them and you adjusted, that was really awesome. And the courage of your workers, who are members of our community, and fixing those roads and the pride that I see and that they've done. And we've had some very difficult challenges, you know, working with different organizations, groups, and interest groups in my district. And you've always been straight with people, you've told them the truth, you've delivered on what you said you would, and you told people when you couldn't. And I respect that. And I think my community respects the work that you've done and the work that Public Works done. And I think we're all very grateful to your staff and you for your tenure in Calaveras. And as I told Miss Stranger, if you show up in Butte County and you suddenly think Orville's not for you, San Andreas is still here. So we hope, we'll hopefully see you around. And thank you for all that you've done for the community that I represent in this county overall.
I appreciate that, Supervisor. And just to really highlight the work in Butte Fire, you know, it really resonated with me as someone who went through my own fire in 1988. My neighborhood was devastated by a fire and the, you know, and the, I saw the impacts on a community and just the opportunity in my small way to give back. And nothing we can do can replace the damage and the hurt and the pain that they've gone through. But if we can provide some little contribution to make things a little bit better, restore some sense of pride, I'm so beyond happy to do that. It's really the reason why I'm a public servant. It's what resonates, what gets me up in the morning. To be able to, the ability to solve real-world problems for real-world people is just, it's a privilege and an honor. And I've really enjoyed my time in Calaveras, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Josh.
Are there any public comments on this item?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pack, I do want to say on behalf of the board, one, I am personally and professionally happy with the road service request system. It has definitely reduced the phone calls that I've gotten. I think your collective, your accomplishment and recognition is a credit to all of Public Works and the work that they do, the, all the different units. Your response in this, as Mr. Guaramendi said to the public, always willing to meet with the public, whether it's one-on-one or in a town hall meeting, job order contracting, you've really brought Public Works and hopefully Calaveras more into the 21st century on doing what's best practices. The, your disaster recovery program, which you alluded to, whether it was the Butte Fire or the 2017, 2019 storms, and please make sure the snowplows are working, and I'm a happy camper. Your capital improvement program, and the fact that even with staffing and fiscal constraints, you've been able to accomplish, Public Works has been able to accomplish a whole lot. And I know I speak on behalf of the board when we thank you very much and we'll miss you and we have something.
Marita, may I have a few words?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Josh, I spoke to you at COG and I appreciate all the work you've done and thank you very much, but I don't want to steal the moment away from your employees. This is a recognition for the employees and that's why we're here. And I think this is a great program. It's absolutely wonderful that you recognize employees. I think that's a great thing. They need the recognition to keep them going. A lot of times, things, as you say, and I've been in many times where things just don't go right, and employees feel that it's their fault sometimes, even though it's not, things just happen. I think this is a wonderful program and whoever takes over after you, I hope they continue it. As you show here, it's increased, you're 48% more than you had last year. You have 40 ballots and I'm taking that you only have 21 last year. So hopefully this goes forward and hopefully it catches on to other departments so we can annually recognize employees within our departments that are standouts. And obviously you have a number of them because the nominees were there. So I, again, thank you for the work and the service you've done here. But again, this moment is supposed to be for the employees and I want to, I want to just shine the light on them.
No, thank you for doing that, Supervisor. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mills.
Yes, Josh. You know that behind every great person, there's a lot of other people that made it happen. And you've reiterated that over and over again. And I'm sure that before you got there, a lot of them were frustrated, struggling, trying to deal with day-to-day things that were sometimes just very simple to fix because, you know, somebody gave them the okay to do it. So it's a very big appreciation for all of these employees to step up in such a difficult time. If you look back from 2015 to 2017 spring storms, the 2019 storms, and the Butte Fire and everything that's gone on in their world, and they've been able to rally and rally around those issues and have some pride and a sense of accomplishment, which is oftentimes overlooked. Everybody says, well, the road's there, so it's going to be there tomorrow. But no, they, you have a great team and I'm sure that they're going to continue long after you've walked away. And they'll find their way in that. And I hope that this kind of program continues. Oftentimes, you know, they do things that we don't see as a board. And it's a lot of the cumulative, they don't, we don't see it kind of stuff that really makes the difference in whether or not they have pride in what they're doing. And I see a sense of pride here in what they're doing and what they'll continue to do. So be sure to thank them for us.
I will, I will. And I think the last thing I'd say to that is, there's a quote I heard years ago that stays with me, and it's that the graveyards are full of indispensable people. And we all like to think that, that, you know, one person leaves or, you know, highly even, we have this sometimes over, you know, sized sense of importance. And I want to highlight that, again, none of this happens without the work of our team. And now that the team has seen, you know, some success, in particular with the challenges with Butte Fire, and we have to recognize that there was some reorganization that impacted morale of our staff, and recognizing that things, now they're being recognized for the good work they do. My hope is that this is a snowball effect that it continues. And by building up confidence and building up morale, it can only have more positive impacts to our community. And I appreciate the recognition, and again, the recognition of our team. And I hope that this continues. And I'm confident now that my team has seen this and they're aware of best practices and how things work, that they're going to continue to do this, and I'm very confident in that.
Okay, thank you. So can't let you leave empty-handed.
Oh, thank you. That is really cool. Thank you so much.
He would have loved a real thing.
And it's a Chevy, thank you. We have to buy Fords and I, you know, the old Chevy part of me dies every day we have to do that. So thank you so much, I appreciate it. And you're not going to be, you can see me a couple more times later today, so. How are you?
See you on Zoom, thank you. All right. I'd like to move to public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to address to the board that is not on the agenda and within our purview, please raise your hand or however you notify us.
We have Carl first.
Ms. Carl Stulton, did you have something you'd like to say?
Well, I think I'd get two public comments because I didn't get to make public comments on Public Works. The system wasn't working.
I did ask for public comments.
I know.
On Public Works. Could you, you're using up your three minutes. So I'll either use it or you use it. Go for it, Carl.
Okay, are you ready, are you ready, Supervisor Callaway, board chair?
Yes, you have three minutes.
I assume you are, okay. You might hear some noises occasionally, I'm playing with the dog while we're doing this. I'd like to acknowledge Supervisor Marita Callaway for being such a wonderful board chair this year. I assume I get more time now. She's done just a fantastic job of keeping the county moving, keeping it together, keeping meetings open to the public. I don't think any other board member could have done that. I'm sorry, don't get jealous, Gary Topenelli. You've really made a big difference to the community this year. A year that was fraught with stress and public health issues and technological issues. You brought things together, kept things moving, and I just want to say thank you. And other people I've talked to want to say thank you as well.
Thank you.
There we go. I have a little extra time, so I believe, just cut me off of my time slot.
I will cut you off, no problem. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you to Dennis Mills, who's been a fantastic supervisor. I'm sorry to see him go. I understand that he has other things that he's moving on to that are going to involve the public. And I think he's going to do a fantastic job of that as well. So thank you very much to Dennis Mills. And I'd like to say thank you to the rest of the board for participating in such a way that was beyond what a normal board in a normal year would have had to do. But special thanks once again to Marita Callaway. Have a great day.
Thank you, Carl Stulton. Is there other?
Yes, we have Terry McBride.
Ms. McBride.
Terry McBride, Calaveras County Chair and Committee Chair and Senator of New California Reading Grievance 34. We always cover the fact that California is in violation of the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Article 6, the First Amendment, the 14th Amendment. The order of the day is that a state of war exists. Insurrection, betrayal, and treachery is in our midst. Quote, "To protect the United States homeland and the American people, I hereby declare a national emergency with respect to this threat," unquote, President Donald Trump. On September 12, 2018, President Trump signed Executive Order 13848 and declared a national emergency pursuant to the International Emergency Economic Powers Act 50 U.S.C. 1701 S et cetera to deal with the unusual and extraordinary threat to the national security and foreign policy of the United States constituted by a threat of foreign interference in or undermining public confidence in the United States elections. This EO is a major step towards the 1807 Insurrection Act being implemented by President Trump. Then on September 10, 2020, the national emergency declared on September 12, 2018 was continued beyond September 12, 2020. Therefore, in accordance with Section 202D of the National Emergency Act 50 U.S.C. 1622D, the President continued for one year the national emergency declaration in Executive Order 13848 with respect to the threat of foreign interference in or undermining public confidence in the United States elections. In the EO 13848, there are a number of provisions and actions that individuals need to be warned about, who have been involved in government, vendors of governmental agencies, elected officials, and those in the media who might find themselves engaging in actions that are detrimental to the United States. Many of California's politicians, bureaucrats, and business leaders are complicit in collaborating with the same enemy that has repeatedly and consistently threatened to destroy the United States. And coincidentally, this same enemy, the People's Republic of China, led by the Chinese Communist Party, has released the virus upon the world that has upended civilization, weakened our economy and national security in ways that equal or surpass a direct kinetic attack upon us. California's governor and his allies have actively taken the side of the enemy and aided and abetted the enemy by suppressing economic recovery and locking down our state, handing an easy victory to the enemy that could only come from treachery within. This is demonstratable through financial ties, media, and institutional alliances.
Ms. McBride, time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Yes, we have one more, Janet Sterling.
Ms. Sterling.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I am Janet Sterling. I am speaking on behalf of Laura Lowell, Chair of the Calaveras County Democratic Central Committee. And I meant to speak under the Public Health Update comment, but it took me a little while to figure out how I was actually supposed to connect.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So this is what Laura Lowell would like to convey. In the midst of what is arguably one of the worst years on record, we, the Calaveras County Democratic Central Committee, would urge the Board of Supervisors to take a step back and look at what unites us as citizens of Calaveras County. We can safely say that regardless of one's political affiliation, all of us want this pandemic behind us. We can easily agree that there have been hardships and challenges across the board, economically, mentally, emotionally, and physically. All of us have been hurt by COVID-19 in some way. We like to offer an idea that allows our community to remain open and stay healthy, is the idea of "and." We are a community used to working together, supporting our neighbors, and doing what needs to get done. In this spirit, we can keep our businesses open and protect the health of our friends, families, and neighbors by simply wearing masks. It is not a constitutional issue, it is not a political issue. It is our community doing what needs to get done so that we can all move on and get back to our lives, playdates, picnics, parades, the things we all love about Calaveras County. Do your help, do you help your neighbor chop firewood when they can't? Do you offer to plow the snow or rake pine needles for friends who need a little extra help? Of course you do, because that's the kind of community we live in. That's the kind of citizens we are. That's the kind of Americans we are, the kind who help each other, regardless of who we all voted for, regardless of what church you attend, or which soccer team your kids played on. We ask the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors to consider the power of "and" when making decisions that affect the health and welfare of Calaveras County citizens. Supporting the current statewide stay-at-home orders and enforcing the statewide mandates will help end this faster. We can slow the spread of the coronavirus and... the coronavirus and keep our businesses open and keep people safe. Respectfully, Laura Lowell, Chair, Calaveras County Democratic Central Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. And please thank Ms. Lowell.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. I'd like to move to the consent agenda. It's normally, items are normally routine and uncontroversial, but any member of the Board's staff or public may pull one. Mr. Mills, are there any consent agenda items that you wish to pull? I didn't think so. Is there? I know it is. I'm just having fun with him.
I've got to do it at least one last time, Madam Chair.
Well, do I get to pick which one?
No, you don't. Number 12.
Is there?
Number 12.
All right, thank you. Any member of staff or the public who would like to pull a consent agenda item?
I would.
Yes, I would. Mr. Stotin, which one would you like to pull?
I'd like to pull number nine and number 11.
Number nine and number 11. All right, thank you. Anything else? Ms. Simpson?
No other public comments.
Mr. Stopper?
I would like to move the remaining portion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, a second by Supervisor Toffanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. Item number nine. Mr. Stotin, what is your question or comment on this, please? Hello? Okay.
I'm unmuted.
Oh, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. And your question or comment on number nine, please?
Number nine. I see that number nine, we have a potential conflict of interest. I'm not sure if there's a conflict of interest here, but there's somebody with the last name of Alt that is being awarded a contract, it assumes, I assume. And looking at the agenda item, I see that Albert Alt has signed off on it. Is this any relation to Albert Alt? And should we be looking closer at this and fully vetting it before we?
There is no conflict of interest, but thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion on number nine, please? Pardon? I'm sorry. Mr. Mills?
Public comment, Madam Chair.
Oh, is there any other public comment on, thank you, on item nine?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stopper?
Madam Chair, so moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, a second.
Sir?
By Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. Ms. Stotin, item 11. Your question, please.
Hello?
Carl?
I need to be unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Number 11. Now, I don't like to make an issue of this, because Ben Stopper's going to be on the Board for a couple more years. And I don't like to anger people. But I noticed that this is an item that has connections with the SEIU. And I made this comment earlier in that downward or upward pressure, whenever you have an item like this, will affect the salary, or could potentially affect the salary of somebody in his household. So it would be prudent if this is seen, and the County Council may look at this too, if this is seen to be the case, that Ben Stopper recuses himself. He really should be refusing himself on all SEIU issues. But let's go forward with this, and I hope that there'd be some comment to this. I'd hope that he recuses himself, but this is Calaveras County. People do whatever they want. Thank you.
Well, that is true. This is Calaveras County, and this is the Board, and we can. But this has been reviewed by Council, and there is no direct benefit to Supervisor Stopper, and he is allowed to vote on this item.
Very good.
May I have, is there any other public comment on item 11? Seeing no public comment, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move this item, Madam Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, and a second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. Thank you. Mr. Mills, item 12.
Yes, I have a concern about the age of the vehicle that is being discussed here. This is a 25-year-old vehicle. It kind of is reminiscent of the time, and I'm going back and dating myself, of the beer truck that we purchased for years ago.
Oh, I missed that. A beer truck?
Remember when, yeah, Hazmat team had a beer truck that we converted over for county fires, back during county.
Now, that's why they do such a good job. Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Mills. Go ahead.
The age of the vehicle is of some concern to me. I think that there should be some kind of a policy in place that we don't go out and bring in vehicles that are 20, 25 years old. I mean, just because I purchased an old Contra Costa water truck, utility body that's still in service, doesn't mean that that's good for government. And I would rather see us purchasing a newer vehicle. And I know that OES has a newer vehicle. It was purchased a couple of years ago. I'm not certain that this makes any sense financially right now.
Okay, thank you.
Please convince me.
Well, we'll do that. Mr. Toffanelli?
Yeah, I have an issue with this item two. I was going to pull it. Dennis beat me to it. I just have an issue with buying a 25-year-old vehicle for $2,000 and then dumping $15,000 into it. What's the, I mean, it's already 25 years old. It says it's grant-funding money that we're being used, and we're transferring money from minor equipment into capital equipment. But I'm, look, I have the budget in front of me. And item 5701, capital equipment, we started the year six months ago with $225,000 in it. Why are we transferring $17,000 into? Where's the rest of the $225,000 for the capital equipment that was in that budget? And again, a 25-year-old car, we're purchasing it, we're putting $15,000 into it with grant money. And then the real issue becomes later on, the maintenance on the vehicle and the cost for it to keep it going. If we're going to spend $17,000 on it, you would expect to get a good lifespan out of it. If we get 10 years, it's going to be a 35-year-old vehicle. We have a Suburban out there that we purchased two years ago in 2018, and we put all this same equipment into it, and it sits out in the parking lot out here. I'm not sure why we need another vehicle. And if we do, and convince me that we do need another vehicle, why don't we just spend the money out of the minor equipment or capital equipment and purchase a newer vehicle? And we would have at least a five-year warranty on it if we're going to put at least this much money into something. I need to be convinced also that this is worth going down this route for a 25-year-old vehicle.
Thank you. Any other Board questions at the moment? Mr. Osborne, are you on the line, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You heard the questions from Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Toffanelli.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair and Honorable Board Members. So 2020 has been a very unique year for everyone, including OES. And one of the things that we have learned from our experience in 2020 is that our response and our resiliency is very much different than what it may have been prior to this year. An example of that is, before, 24 months ago, had I, as your Director, come to you and said that I want to expend $119,000 on portable generators because PG&E is going to shut off large swaths of the county, you probably would have thought that I was a mic crazy. But here we are in 2020 rocking PSPs several times each year. So, and that actually dovetails into Mr. Toffanelli's question regarding the capital assets. Most of those, the scheduled capital assets, are in fact those generators that we did purchase so that we can disperse those generators to predetermined points throughout the county and create resiliency centers and support our first responder partners if needed through that process. That also has bearing on why I might be asking to, or why I am asking to purchase a 25-year-old vehicle. This vehicle is unique in that it's not a beer truck. It's a Suburban. It's been owned and operated by Ebbets Pass Fire. So one of the key differences is that it has been fire truck maintained in a meticulous manner. And the equipment that we intend to place in that will be movable from one vehicle to the next. Because we purchased a mobile radio and put it in a 25-year-old vehicle, doesn't mean that we can't keep that radio for its lifetime. It doesn't go away. It's not permanently assigned to that vehicle. And in my experience, that is often what we did at other jurisdictions that I've worked for, where we recycled equipment like that on a routine basis to get the life out of them. So the reason that we are looking to add this vehicle to the OES team, if you will, is that our response has changed in that with a single vehicle, we can deploy a single generator one at a time. As everyone is aware, we've had multiple instances throughout this summer and throughout last winter where we had multiple sites open and operating, and our job is to support those. Warming centers, cooling centers, community resiliency centers spread throughout our 1,100 square miles. My intention with purchasing this vehicle is that we'll be able to, as the OES team, be able to go more than one direction at a time in order to support those multiple sites simultaneously, instead of driving to one place, and then another place, and another place. This was my solution. It is 25 years old, but it's been meticulously maintained. And this was a cost-effective, in my mind, way to not go out and spend $70,000 on a new vehicle when something like this could suffice for our needs. I think I covered all of the questions. If I didn't, would Supervisor Mills or Supervisor Toffanelli remind me of them? And I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. How many miles are on this vehicle? 100, I'm sorry, John. Again, what was it?
185,205. Yes, sir.
That's a lot of miles for a 1996 vehicle. Hold on one second. Are you, 1996, do you have the complete service history on this vehicle? Or is that something that they maintain? Normally, on those vehicles in the fire department, they maintain those records. Are those available for you to see exactly what's been done on this over 25 years? Have they replaced the motor? Have they replaced anything, what's been done to it?
The motor was replaced, if I remember correctly, sir, within the last 20,000 miles. It might be a little bit more mileage than that. It has been completely fleet-maintained. In addition to, it wasn't a frontline vehicle. It was an officer's vehicle. It was actually the chief's. And so, in my experience, administrative vehicles or command vehicles don't see the wear and tear that frontline vehicles see as well.
So is it a four-wheel drive?
Yes, sir.
It is four-wheel drive. So a Suburban, for what your purposes are, versus a truck, if you want, got a truck, a new truck, Suburban is your choice? Because I just want to understand the reasoning for.
Sure, yes, sir. And actually, we are fortunate enough to have access to a truck now. And the downside of the pickup is that its person hauling ability is limited. It's a driver and a passenger at this point. And the Suburban would allow us to not only haul things such as our refueling trailer, or our generators, or our supplies trailer, but it would also allow us to haul folks that often are deployed with the equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John, would it make better sense to coordinate with Public Works or some other department that has these vehicles that we could use on a limited basis for emergencies?
That's always a possibility. I would hate to hang our response and our resiliency hat on borrowing a car from another department.
That's all I have.
Any other question, Mr. Stopper?
John, would this be in the second Suburban, will this be used full-time, or will it be used during specific situations? So what's the wear and tear look like for each year on something like this?
We do not have assigned vehicles at this time, so it would be used during regular business hours. And another feature that I realized about our current vehicle, which is very nice and I'm thankful to have, is that in the new world of COVID and Zoom means that we do not travel as much. So I expect that our mileage would continue to be lower than, say, prior to COVID, where, you know, you're doing a lot more live meetings and traveling to and from those meetings. To give you an idea, Supervisor Stopper, I think in my little over a year of being here, the newer Suburban has had about 5,000 or 6,000 miles put on it.
What's the cost of a new vehicle right now, moving forward? That would handle the same application.
The last new vehicle that we purchased was actually an F-150 four-door cab for public health. And it was also purchased within the last couple of years. And I believe it was about $47,000 prior to being outfitted with equipment.
So with 6,000 miles per year, approximately, and that's prior to being outfitted, and you're saying it costs about $15,000 to outfit, is that, F-150 is a half-ton? What's Suburbans rated at? Are they half-ton?
No, sir. They're built on a 3/4-ton frame.
Yeah, they're put on a 3/4-ton frame. So they can legitimately tow more?
Yes, sir.
All right. I also had talked to our local fire chief on Calaveras Consolidated, and he had said that he supports this. You know, he's familiar with where this vehicle comes from, in Ebbets Pass. And he says it's been immaculately taken care of. I think, you know, I think that Supervisor Toffanelli and Supervisor Mills bring up very good points on date and everything, but there's a give and take on cost and wear and tear. I don't see a high volume of use on this vehicle. So I think at this point, it's justified on the cost savings. You know, just with the knowing of how well Ebbets Pass has maintained. You know, just with, with the knowing of how well Ebbets Pass has maintained, maintained this vehicle so far.
John, would, thank you, Chair. John, would you consider in a future budget year to looking towards a new vehicle when you're thinking about cost per mile, depreciation costs, maintenance costs, et cetera? Calculating that out, would that make sense in an out year of two or three or four years
Yes, that's one of the things that makes the current situation we face with a, with a relatively brand-new vehicle and an older vehicle. It gives us some depth and it also gives us some room to anticipate at some point adding a second, hopefully newer vehicle to the fleet. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does. I just want to have some comfort that if we run down this road, that it's not going to be one that's used for a couple of years and then is relegated to the bone pile out there behind the fleet area.
Yes, sir, the bone pile. And actually, we, we had another Suburban that the Sheriff's Department had, and we tried to revive that from the bone pile. And unfortunately, it was, it was too far gone and it was surplus. And so, this is a, a less expensive medium to accomplish the force multiplier I'd like to have while being somewhat cost-sensitive. So, I certainly intend not to relegate anything to the bone yard anytime soon.
Well, I just want to be sure that, you know, this is a wise use of money at this point, and it is going to serve the purpose for longer than just a couple of years.
Yes, sir. I, I try to spend both general dollar funds as well as grant funds as if they were my own.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Of course, you are going to get a warranty from Chief Johnson on this, aren't you?
All, all the way from Ebbets Pass to, to at least Highway 49. I will certainly negotiate with him.
Thank you. Were there any board questions or comments? Were there any public comments on this, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have Carl Sotin.
Mr. Carl Sotin, your comments on this or questions, please.
Yes, yeah, $2,000 for 1996 vehicle. I've just looked at Edmunds. And yeah, it's on the high side, but it has a new engine. So, I'm okay with that as long as all this equipment can be easily transferred to a new vehicle. And I'm not a big fan of O E S. I'd give them a, you know, a cell phone and make them take public transportation if that's up to me, but, but it's not. It's up to you folks. Let's go along with this, I think. This is my last comment of public of 19 or 2020. Have a wonderful holidays. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Yes, and the equipment can be transferred from this vehicle to another vehicle if needed. If there's any other public comment?
No other public comment.
I'd like to bring the item back. If there's no further comment, I'll take a motion on item 12.
So moved, Madam Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Stoffer. Is there a second?
I, I, I will second it, but with, with the, I have some real feelings about this vehicle and, and the, I'm, I'm sure it was well taken care of by Ebbets Pass Fire. I know Mike and his crew and, but it's just, it's still 25 years old. It's had an engine replaced on it. But I will, I will second it so we can get four-fifths vote for it.
All right. I have a motion by Supervisor Stoffer, a second by Supervisor Toffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to item 13, Public Works, a presentation on State Route 49 project study report. Are you zooming us, Mr. Pack?
I am. Good morning again, Chair Callaway, members of the board. I'm Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works, and we're here today to provide a presentation to the board on the State Route 49 project study report. I have Daniel Kerr of our, of G H D who was the consultant on the project. And really quick, before he dives in, this is a project that's been funded through the COG to prepare a study report for us to determine alternatives and preliminary cost estimates for potential improvements on Highway 49 through the San Andreas corridor. And so, with that said, I'll turn it over to Daniel for his presentation.
Thank you very much, Josh, and congratulations on your ceremony earlier today, Madam Speaker, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. I'm going to go ahead and attempt to share my screen so I can start the presentation. Please do let me know when it is up and running.
Looks good.
Thank you, Josh. Great. So, as, as Josh outlined today, what we've done is progressed the improvements and coordination between the county, the COG, and Caltrans for the state route heading through the San Andreas area. So, Highway 49 all the way from Pool Station down to Airport Road, so the entire two-mile stretch of the highway that runs through San Andreas. As you see here on the left, we've got a rough agenda today where we wanted to talk about the prior studies, what came out of this current study, outlining some of the development plans and potentials that you guys have in the area and working towards the next step, which would be the environmental documents, final design, and then ultimately construction of these improvements. So, as we dive in, another kind of more orientative view of what the extent of the project is, it is pretty massive, two-mile-long corridor, which does extend into portions of the side streets of the county's control, not necessarily Caltrans. And it does extend from Pool Station Road down to Airport Road outlined in that blue dash line you see here. So, what are we doing here? This is a project initiation document as outlined by Caltrans. So, this is really the, the document that, that allows the county to go pursue funding, pursue alternative agreements and granting opportunities to, to work towards bettering their community and infrastructure while we're hitting all of those checkboxes required by Caltrans. One of those big checkboxes is out identifying the purpose and need of, of a project in general. So, I'll use more layman's terms than the technical aspects we came in. We've identified that the State Route 49 corridor has a slightly higher incident or collision rate than the statewide average, as well as including quite a few mobility gaps for, for cyclists and pedestrians alike, some limited crossing locations and opportunities. We do need to, you know, keep in mind that this operates as a main street for the San Andreas community while also operating as an important thoroughfare for people going to and from their destinations, work, school, what have you, recreation, beautiful Calaveras County. So, as a part of establishing the purpose and need of the project, we now know that we've got some collision concerns, we've got speed concerns, and pedestrian and mobility crossing concerns as well. So, you'll see a lot of those highlighted once we dive into the concepts. I did want to remind the board that back in 2017, the county also in, in conjunction with Calaveras COG, prepared a corridor study, and many of the findings and implementation aspects that you saw during that presentation in late 2017 are going to be carried forward here, just kind of brought to a higher level of detail. So, that prior study was presented, as I mentioned, at the end, near the end of 2017 to, to the board here. And what our project initiation document, our project study report leveraged in that was a lot of the traffic analysis and design, as well as the community outreach that occurred back then. There were quite a few online polls and surveys, in-person meetings when we could do those, and, and got great feedback where we established long and short-term goals for the corridor, operating, as I said, as a main thoroughfare for regional transit and then as a main street for the San Andreas community. And it laid the, the proper groundwork for our study. So, as always important is it being good stewards of our environment. During that prior study, there was a preliminary CEQA or California Environmental Quality document prepared. Our project study report really tailored itself to allow this document to just get refreshed and segmented up if we wanted to look at a smaller corridor rather than the full two miles. We've geared this current P S R document to do so, to give you guys the most flexibility. As an attachment to the project report is the environmental analysis report, which lays out the exact number of studies and a good approximation of how long it's going to take to get through that, that CEQA process or perhaps even NEPA if we were able to find some federal funds. Also included is traffic analysis. So, as a part of the corridor study and public outreach, we, the community feedback we gained and gathered really wanted to establish San Andreas as, as a specific, you know, semi-rural aspect of the highway, not the open-air rural aspect of, of the majority of 49. So, they, the findings and conclusions from that report suggested that we border the community with roundabouts to help slow speeds and kind of set the tone for a lower-speed environment, as well as provide opportunity for beautification and monumentation. Welcome to San Andreas. And I've got a couple of slides here to show you today. And then internal to, to town or to the community, it would be including signals and side-street stop controls, similar to what you, you see today, although signals are, are not in existence. Wanted to break up the project into more digestible segments. We actually looked at the five segments shown here along the highway and included the Mountain Ranch intersection with the highway. But upstream on that blue line, the county's actually moved forward with some construction activities and additional design activities on Mountain Ranch right in front of county So, I do, I did mention a complete street, and I'm not sure if the audience understands the bargain, so just definitely want to talk about a complete street means that we're providing access to this public space in historic environment, Main Street, to all users. So, that's not just vehicles, not just cyclists, but pedestrians as well. So, the cross-section you see here on the top is a very typical segment that we tried to apply throughout the community, which includes at least five-foot-wide sidewalks, on-street parking, we know that's a commodity up here, designated Class II bike lanes, as well as maintaining the, the three lanes for traffic, the turning lane and then the two-through movement lanes. In some of the intersections, we're going to need additional turn pockets. That's the second typical section you see here where the parking is removed. And it's also not wise to have parking so close to the corners that impact site distance, et cetera, et cetera. And then there are a couple of roundabout intersections that we've been studying. This is a typical cross-section there, down there at the bottom of that. So, as we dive in, we're going to go ahead and go through the project segment by segment from that map, starting on the north end. So, this is the intersection with Pool Station Road. This would be the, the first kind of gateway entrance into the San Andreas area where we're looking at a speed-reducing roundabout while maintaining capacity and throughput, closing some sidewalk gaps, and including the on-street parking, as I've noticed, noted here. Up north is just a preliminary connection to the, to the existing developments that have access to the highway. You see a stop-controlled intersection there in the middle top of your screen. That is certainly open to further negotiations with the property owners. Heading a little bit further south on, on the corridors to segment two, you'll, you'll notice two brand-new proposed traffic signals at the, the high school intersection and Court Street with the highway, as well as suggesting that we modify the access control for Bellevue Street to a one-way. The site distance is very limited, and, and we've seen some incidences at that intersection. So, providing the left-turn option at Lumber Avenue will have much better site distance and hopefully improved safety operation for the corridor. As we jump over to segment three, we kind of get into the heart of the historic area of San Andreas, Main Street. You still see Court Street here on the left. There's opportunities to improve the, the parking lot and park-and-ride behind the Masonic and, and Theater areas. And if you notice, there are a couple of raised medians and bulbed-out crossings to help close those accessibility gaps to the important shops, restaurants, and destinations you guys have running the highway. Notice on-street parking is provided almost throughout the area except for when constrained for turn pockets and driveway access. Here's some renderings of what were, what the possibilities that we see at Main Street with that raised median island and staged pedestrian crossing, just to give you a flavor and a taste of, of what can be achieved here in the, in the revitalization when we can all go back and, and join our businesses, which I'm sure we all hope happen very, very soon. Segment four heads down towards the Mountain Ranch intersection near, near the board chambers itself. We're currently looking at a preferred option of a traffic signal, as you see here. It's, it fits very well within the corridor. There's a little bit less sidewalk gaps in this portion, which is great, so there's less, less to close. But we also recognize that there may be an opportunity to make Mountain Ranch Road the San Andreas Gateway versus the, the Airport Road option. So, we drafted up a quick concept of what a roundabout may look like at this intersection. But again, this is a Altrans and county facility, so there's going to be some back and forth and specific intersection selections will definitely happen in the next stage, which is the environmental stage. Heading it off to the fifth and final segment, which is the Southern Gateway Planning Area, the area where the county has the, the largest development potential in the, in the San Andreas region, and includes those, those speed-reduction curves of roundabout. It's highly flexible with these side-street installations to adapt and modify to the, the planned developments or whatever the county envisions for this area. I heard that you guys had a general plan zoning update today, which is wonderful. A part of this project would also to be removed, the skewed intersection approach of Angel's Road. If any of you have driven it like I have, it's, it's quite hard to, to crank your neck and turn, look back behind you to make sure that entering the highway is safe. Realigning that intersection and providing the roundabout access point will be a far superior option and certainly safer option for the community members. Here's a couple of renderings and options that we were thinking, just to give you again, just a flavor, a taste of what the possibilities are at these roundabouts for gateway features. You can see we've got an ore cart with, with some gold flowing out to represent the historic mining, mining history in the area, as well as a beautiful monument sign and some of the natural plants and topography going on in the area. Now, here's the scary part. Please do recognize that this is a two-mile-long corridor, and we've developed the plan in such a manner to work with Caltrans that we don't need to tackle all two miles at once. So, when you see the large numbers here, 70 and 80 million dollars for escalated construction and design and environmental impact costs, please note that the county, the COG, and Caltrans have plenty of options to break this into more bite-size and reasonable project sizes and not have to go back to this project initiation step. And just as side note, Caltrans currently has a shop project in the works along the highway, which replaces some of the roadway structural section and closes some of those sidewalk gaps that I showed you in our concepts here today. So, there will be millions of dollars spent of state money on the highway that can just be subtracted out of this project. But those have not been implemented yet, so we definitely want to keep that on the list so you guys can still program and plan for the, any funding or any gaps that are left over by the Caltrans team. All right. Well, that coming to the end of our presentation today, you know, as we started off, we're in the scoping and financing phase. As I mentioned, this report allows you guys to release the next stage of design with Caltrans in the COG to go search for funding, grant opportunities, and get prepared for, for real project environmental documentation and project reporting as required by Caltrans. So, I've listed out a couple of bullet points here that I think that the county should prioritize as, as your consultant giving you the, the best advice possible, is, is work quickly and promptly building on what we've, what we've gathered in this project initiation document with Caltrans to get a cooperative agreement for the next phases established. The current cooperative agreement ended at this project initiation phase, and having this agreement in place is only going to help streamline the, the future phases. Future phases include a more detailed design and intersection-specific control studies. So, I did mention the roundabouts, the traffic signals, the side-street stop controls. Caltrans has a policy directive where every intersection that we study in the environmental phase needs to be evaluated for stop signs, signals, roundabouts, and any other feasible options at that time. So, we will be revisiting each of these intersections as we progress forward, but we feel we've presented to you the best solution, those presented to you the best solution, those options that are going to pass that intersection control criteria in the best. And then certainly, in the environmental phase includes environmental documentation. I did mention the completed SEQA document, that once we select what is going to be the next focus of the county in the corridor, we would just refresh that SEQA document and get it updated. Should we find some federal money, we may need to open up a NEPA document, and all of those policies and procedures are outlined in the environmental report as a part of the PSR PDS. And then the big one, of course, work towards finding sources for funding so we can actually get these improvements implemented. Thank you so much for your time. I will open it up to any questions from the board or the public.
Yeah, let me, before we open it up to, and thank you, Daniel, for that presentation, I do want to highlight a couple of items before we move to questions. First of all, I will say, when I saw the sticker price, my jaw, I think, hit the floor, and then I did it a few more times, but I want to highlight, for our other major project in the county, the Wagon Trail project, it's been many decades, the cost estimate for that is similar to the cost estimate of this. I want to highlight that it's taken us 20-plus years to get only one of those segments funded for potential construction. And so the challenge is, and I think it puts the framework that a comprehensive project along the San Andreas corridor is costly, and with the funding structure right now, it's unlikely. What I see as an approach is us bifurcating or separating some of the smaller elements out of this and potentially pursuing those as projects. And one of those would be the Highway 49, Mountain Ranch Road signal. We know that it has a number of collisions, it's a frequent foreign at our sides, there's a lot of activity, it operates at a four-level of service, and the ability to improve that, to improve safety, there's a project there that we can potentially pursue, obviously the direction of the board. But finally, the opportunity to pursue other elements, it brings another project to the table. For decades, for years and decades, the COG has been primarily pursuing Wagon Trail, and we have to start looking outside the horizon of what other projects are important to the community. This is certainly one of those, and I think with your comments and feedback today, gives us some direction on some of the next steps we may take. So with that said, I want to thank you for your time, Daniel, thank you for your time, and I want to open it up to the chair and the board, any questions they may have.
Mr. Mills?
Josh, discussing bite-sized pieces, how far down could we segment this thing to make it bite-sized?
Well, Supervisor Mills, I think, for example, the signalization is a good example of that. You know, signals are only a fraction of the cost of roundabouts. They provide operationally, in a lot of situations, a similar benefit and performance. In this case, I think especially when you look at the right-of-way impacts, the existing grade approaching Mountain Ranch Road from Highway 49, it's a viable alternative. I think ideally, this gives us those little pieces, so if the board has specific improvements within the corridor that they're interested in, and I don't think there's any limit, I mean, we proposed this five segments, but even within those segments, we could pull individual projects out. We now have an environmental document that can help support that. We have this project where we can look at various funding sources, including STIP. I don't think there's any limit to the imagination of the board and Public Works and COG and others to look at creative ways to deliver much-needed improvements within the project.
Would this project qualify for FLAP or build grants in the future?
Supervisor Mills, no, it would not qualify for FLAP. There needs to be an economic-generating federal land use around here. Just based on my experience sitting on that programming committee, this would not be a project for FLAP, it would not compete well. I'm not even sure if it would meet the minimum qualms. It could be considered for either build or infra. Certainly is a project that kind of meets some of those needs. We have not seen much success in recent years with us pursuing that, but I certainly could argue, you know, there's a little chicken before, or you know, chicken before the egg here, too. I think we might need to advance some of the other sections, but I think at some point, this could be a project that we would consider for applying for those funding sources.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Tuffinelli, this is your area?
This is my district, it is. And I want to thank Daniel for bringing up the Caltrans shop project. I've been on them for a number of years. They've paved both inside and outside of town in several directions, but they finally, after me being on them, will put it on their shop program for '22, '23, to grind and get rid of the crown in the road so they can repave it. Their excuse was that the crown was too big, and they had to do major work on it, which they will have to do, and replace and fix the gutters and sidewalks. Now that being said, it's supposed to be in their shop program in '22, '23. If we do improvements in segments like we're talking about, it would simply be very beneficial to us to, at the time they're doing that project, try and get funds located, whether through COG or wherever we can, to be in conjunction with them. Otherwise, we'll be redoing things that they've done in a new roadway, because basically we're going to have a new roadway through town when they finish. And so I'm very anxious to try and get forward and get some funding available to at least do some of this program, or these segmented projects during that time the Caltrans comes in and actually tears this road up. That's my focus going forward. This plan has been around, I've been working on it, I've been involved in it for a number of years. I do have a question for Daniel, is showing back on your slides, what's next? You had final design. Do you have a timeframe to when your final design would be completed, and that would put us in a position that we have a shovel-ready project, that we could seek funding for many portions of this project? Is it sometime within that timeframe when the shop project for Caltrans comes forward?
Certainly. Do you want me to take this one, Josh?
Why don't I take it, and you can find anything else, Daniel.
No problem.
Certainly, we have been coordinating with Caltrans on this, they've been part of the review of this. As a matter of fact, we have a cooperative agreement in place where they have been providing comments and feedback. So they are aware of it. I think at least in the short term, the shop work is taking advantage of this PSR to make sure that the work is done in a manner not to eliminate opportunities in the future. I think I look at more of them as peer documents, in particular, looking at the improvements that were identified, you know, with the amount of right-of-way and what we're looking at, I think there's a synergy between the two. I do want to highlight that the timeframe that Caltrans has with the shop in the next couple of years, the anticipation to deliver some sort of comprehensive design package, that even if it was for a small segment, I think it's unlikely. I think you're looking at a tight timeframe. I don't know if I'd want to push Caltrans back or ask and delay a much-needed shop project to do that. We certainly could, based on the board direction. As far as THD's work, they are, this is the limits of their work, so, and then the effort and the investment to get through to design and the other stages that we need to do, including a supplemental alternatives analysis, that's going to take some time and it's going to be quite costly. And so I don't want to put the cart before the horse, and I appreciate your concerns in making sure we're not, you know, we're not going back and having to rip up improvements, and we are sensitive to that, we have shared that, and I'm just, I'm worried without having a real unified plan and a funding source, that the investment of spending time and effort on design to try and catch up to a shop project, that might not be money well-spent, in my opinion. But certainly at the board's discretion, we could certainly pursue something.
Well, I certainly don't want to delay anything on this project for the shop project for Caltrans. I want them to move forward. I want to get it done, it needs to be done. A lot of the work that they're proposing to do with curbs and gutters and sidewalks certainly needs to be done in town. So I don't want to delay that in any way, shape, or form, but at least we can maybe keep an eye on some funding that could be coming available that would fit us here for this project that we're looking at today, and at least moving into the position, or some funding moving to the position to a final design. Because once that's there, again, then you have a shovel-ready project. And the funding becomes more available with a shovel-ready project than trying to go out and find funding for something that could be in the future at some time. So those are my concerns.
Yeah, and I would totally agree with you on that. And like I said, I think separating a few of these out, if the board does agree, for example, Mountain Ranch Road and 49 is an early point of emphasis, and I would look at other areas within the corridor as well. The roundabouts are certainly really impressive features, they're also quite costly. And so I think that's something where, at a good funding source, it's not a large funding source, but CMAC is a great opportunity. That's the congestion mitigation and air quality program that looks at funding programs through federal funding to improve operations, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so there are some projects here that would certainly be eligible. I think we found this in build and infra and other grant opportunities, that if you're looking at tens of millions of dollars, the avenue of grant funding sources is virtually nonexistent, or very small. If you're looking at small projects within that, like the things most important, like an intersection project where you're looking at maybe a million, that is within the realm of CMAC. That is in the realm of our mitigation fee programs. I think those are things that we can utilize this grant as a jumping-off point to heavily pursue. And so that's where I would say, I wouldn't want to get bogged down with a large project. We would identify a few of the smaller ones, and then use the funding sources at hand to deliver those, while still having the vision to make sure that it fits within the larger picture and the larger framework of a corridor project.
Yeah, and I'll have to agree with you on that, but you know, Josh, you just got us $5.6 million for the Wagon Trail. I was hoping you'd get some money for this project, really, too.
Or, yeah.
Before you left, by the end of the month, before you left. I'll have to agree with you, but with one caveat, on the intersection of Mountain Ranch Road and 49, Caltrans is very well aware of that intersection and the problems there. And we may be able to get, in conjunction with them, putting some money in to do some improvements for that project, and it could be during the time they fix the crown problem and redo through that. So, because it is a problem intersection, and they're very well aware of it, so.
Yeah, we certainly can pursue that. I think the COG is a great first step, working with their representation to see if there's an opportunity there. I think you're seeing with Wagon Trail, they have stepped up with some funding opportunities there, whether it's shop or other opportunities, and we can certainly work with that, with them, as far as targeting some very specific improvements within the corridor. I couldn't agree more.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you. I'm just going to pile on with Gary. I think this is a really important project for our entire county. You know, I would argue, and I'm sure people have different opinions, but 60 years ago or so, when they punched that highway through, now we're finally fixing some of their mistakes. We need to be able to slow traffic down, and it's vital to the future of this town and as our county seat. So anything we can do to move funding forward, Gary is spot-on, we need to be shovel-ready, because I know our government's been talking, our federal government's been talking about infrastructure bill for years now, maybe it's going to get done, and when it gets done, I'd like us to be right at the front, because this is our front door. And, you know, we need to do this for San Andreas.
Agreed. Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
I believe Kathy Galeno would like to say something.
And Ms. Galeno?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board. Thank you, Josh, and thank you, Daniel, great presentation. This is something that I strongly, strongly support, especially as our county seat. We need to slow traffic down, we need to get people out of their cars to shop, to eat, to enjoy the historic beauty of our San Andreas. There are other funding opportunities. I'd love to partner with Public Works and see if we can do something through the Small Business Administration, through Community Development Block Grants, through USDA. There is some funding out there that I strongly feel that we could leverage and make more of these segments doable.
$68 million, do you have that?
I could write Jack.
Thank you. Are there any other public or staff comments? All right. No. Mr. Tuffinelli, did you want to say anything else before I close this out?
No, I think we've covered it, and this plan I've seen, I've been involved in it for a while, and I certainly agree that the funding sources available for us for that amount of money to do the project all at once certainly is very slim. But again, piecing it in and maybe doing something with the beginning of Mountain Ranch Road and 49, when Caltrans does their project, their shop project, to finally take care of downtown San Andreas, that we can be at least ready, or have some funding, or try and find some funding sources for that time. We're still looking at a couple of years away, or maybe 18 months, 24 months away, before they bring that project in and start on it. I know a lot of things are happening right now, but once this thing goes and we get done with COVID and we move on, there could be a lot of different programs out there that the federal government or the state government have put forward for infrastructure, which Jack has pointed out. They've talked about it for a long time, it could be the time that it actually comes. And I'm very, very, I'm going to be very aggressive of trying to get this thing shovel-ready and get the final design done, and the funding for it, and even if we have to go through COG to do that, and use some of the CMAC money, like Josh has pointed out, whatever we need to do to get this, because this is government-centered, this is San Andreas, and Kathy's absolutely correct, trying to get people to slow down and stop and explore San Andreas and look through it. We have museums here, we have on Main Street here, we have a lot of different things here that people need, that don't, right now, just drive through on their way to go skiing, or to go to Murphy's, or wherever they're going, that don't even know it exists, have no idea. So I think this is a very important, very important project that we need to push forward.
Mr. Pack, any, on your final agenda item?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments and feedback. I think the next steps, once we put a bow on this, is to start pursuing some of these different options. I think, like I said, I think Mountain Ranch and 49 is a piece we can, you know, we might be able to do, not only through CMAC, but also I believe it's identified in our RIM program, and so there might be some funding available there. I think that's a piece that we can put in the near term for potential delivery. And then again, I appreciate with Kathy, we could certainly work with her on funding sources, and then again, looking at these kind of micro-targeting specific areas. I do want to highlight that there's going to be a struggle as far as developing a corridor-wide design plan, that's millions and millions of dollars to prepare that document. The investment on that is pretty sizable. So I think the Wagon Trail approach here, which we have seen success, is a template that we can utilize by breaking it up into segments, and then working with the board, working with our partners at the COG, working with Economic Development and others to target specific high, you know, high-benefit-cost locations. I think that's a good approach here in the near future, and appreciate Gary's comments on targeting some improvements to fall in line with the shop project here in the next couple of years. So I think we have some marching orders here, and we have the direction to move forward with the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. There were no public comments on this item. I want to just do a housekeeping item with the board, that we'll do item 14, then we'll maybe take a lunch break, come back for 15, 16. Supervisor announcements in closed session, is that all right with the rest of you, or do you just want to work through?
I'm sorry.
Okay. The vice chair said it's okay, so it's a wrap. We'll do, we'll move to...
You pulled Supervisor Stopper, and then you ended?
I don't do pulls. Yeah, that's it. All I needed was where the vice chair was. I'd like to move to item 14. Sheriff DiVassilio, are you with us, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Yes, I am here with UnderSheriff Massito.
And?
And how are you doing today?
I'm doing just fine, thank you.
Good. As you see, we would like to see the dump fees waived for the sheriff's office as we've been bringing marijuana and related items from our marijuana grows into the landfill, and we've been doing that since 2016, when the urgency ordinance came around, and in years prior to that, just during regular marijuana grows. And we've never been charged, and then all of a sudden, here about a year ago, we started being charged for disposal of the marijuana, and we'd like to see that changed, is the bottom line.
Okay, the staff... Okay, the staff report was fairly clear on the, from the sheriff's perspective. Are there any questions on this?
Supervisor Toffinelli here, Rick.
Yes, sir.
AB 443 funds, is that something you can use for this?
I know you're absolutely joking about that. And I appreciate the humor at this time of year.
Do you, do you know just offhand, I, you know, I'm going to back you on this item, but you said for the last year you've been paying for disposing of this at the landfill. Do you have an amount that you've had to pay over that time? You have a cumulative amount?
There, there was a bunch of bills from last year that we paid. I don't have those numbers available, but what I can tell you, give me one second here. There was a total of about, let me see here real quick. It was just over $2,184 that we were billed.
Wow.
And that covers the month of July, August, September, October, and November. And I have not paid that. There was a bill, you know, prior to that, we had been paying them. And it got to a point to where I just told my staff to stop paying it until we get this problem resolved.
Okay.
It's, it's not a monstrous amount, but it's still...
It's still, that's a good sum. Yeah, that's not, you know, it's not, it's 2,100 bucks.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Stopper? Mr. Mills?
Can you turn on your camera? We haven't seen your handsome face in a while.
Well, absolutely.
Oh, nice background.
You like that, huh?
You know, yeah, there's a lot, lot of issues with the county where we're, you know, we're just trading money across the county. But you do understand that integrated waste is, you know, got a money issue along with the rest of us. Does the jail crew do work down in, down at the landfill?
Yes, and there, there's a lot of things that the sheriff's office does where we do not charge any of the other departments. As far as the landfill specifically, yes, we do go down there and do weed eating quite a bit. We will go down there to collect ammunition. We will go down to collect prescription medications. If they have an issue, we will send our hazmat team down there to do a hazcat for items that they're unsure of. And again, the inmate work crew is down there doing weed eating quite a bit. So we do a lot of work for multiple county departments and the sheriff's office has never charged for that. I've been at the landfill when they've had to dig a hole. That loader digs a hole in about two minutes. We're the ones that dump the product into the hole and then they come back over and cover it up. It's a very minor, time-consuming project for the landfill. So most of the costs that I've just discussed, some of the cost was the employee cost down there, but most of the cost is what they're billing us for the actual disposal. And as we all know, marijuana is an agricultural type of a product, so it decomposes, so it's not taking up really any space in the landfill. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. There, there's a bit of a trade-off there already that you've incorporated into it. I just think that anytime it doesn't cross a union line when it comes to employees or anyone else, that you can continue to help out the landfill with work down there to, for, for a trade-off, I think that's more than fair on, let's just say, a quid pro quo. And I do appreciate that you have stepped surfaces up like that for the rest of the county in a lot of issues. You know, typically, I understand the position that, you know, the solid, solid waste is in the county and we're, we're on a short leash when it comes to cost and what we're going to have to do to maintain these services. So in the near future, if we don't address that, then you're going to be paying someone else to get rid of that marijuana. And, and so that could possibly be an issue in the future. But I appreciate that and I can support this on the fact that you're more than willing to give as well as take at the same time. I do appreciate that, Rick.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mills?
Good morning, Rick. Yeah, one of the, I don't have a problem with this, but one of the things, I went back in your budget to try to see if I could find it on a line item, and there was no line item there in last year's budget. So again, you know, we start nickel and diming, this department is doing so many nickels for that department, et cetera, back and forth. We can really wrap ourselves around the axle, so to speak, of getting things done when all we're doing is paper shuffling. So, you know, if it's a case...
Well, that's a problem. Supervisor Mills, that's kind of the problem is that there's a lot of paperwork for a very small amount of funding and it doesn't, it just, it causes a lot of extra headaches. And the bottom line is the county is going to pay for that one way or the other because those are funds that I'm going to have to add to my budget in that line item for the marijuana program.
Well, Rick, that's where I was going to go was, you know, we really have to think about how much it costs us to shuffle the paper.
Exactly.
Versus what we're going to get done for shuffling the paper. That's, that's really what it's going to come down to, but that's a budget-related issue.
Yeah.
I support what you're trying to do. I just, I just wanted to make that point about we can't spend a lot of time dealing with a very costly, expensive shuffling paper, just to prove a point.
Agreed. Thank you.
Well, I had some concerns that I did email the sheriff on one, similar to Supervisor Toffinelli, is how much money are we talking about? Because the money for integrated waste is a property fee. It has not gone up. There are no plans to move it up. And so we're taking from a department that has grants, general fund money and moving them. Are you bad-mouthing me, Rick? I can see that your mouth's moving. I can see your mouth moving. He's saying, there she goes again. Okay. So my concern is, my concern was that we recognize that we are having a unit that is property tax funded of the 140,000, I said 150,000, and it hasn't gone up in whatever 20, 30 years unless we have the means to raise it through a vote of the people that isn't going up. So we're taking a department, in this case, happens to be the sheriff, saying you can use the facility and realize that that facility, which is not getting any increased revenue in any way unless they happen to get a grant on occasion, on rare occasion. So I just think we, we've heard the sheriff's side and I don't think we disagree with that, but we need to understand the impact to integrated waste. So whether it's $2,000 or $20,000, it's still an impact somebody's paying. Also, the fact that he does nice things for other departments, I'm really happy about that. I know there's other departments that do nice things for the sheriff. And that's A87, and that's why we have A87. So, I mean, and just looking at the whole picture, I think, you know, we are all partners in trying to manage Calaveras County, but we just need to realize the impact of that. That's my editorial. And I also asked him if he had grants or special funding that could pick up that chair. So he told me no. If there's no other questions or comments on this item, I will entertain a motion. Oh, yes, thank you. Public comments? Is there any public comments?
There is no public comment.
There are no public comments. Thank you. Usually I'm that sort of asking, but...
I will move this item, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffinelli. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you. We'll stand in recess till 1:30. Thank you. Item 15, Facilities Act ad hoc committee report. Supervisor Guaramendi or Toffinelli, did you want to make any comments on this?
Al was presenting on this. Al was presenting on it, so...
I know, but I just, I'm asking it was a courtesy, since you were both on the committee. If there's some introductory comments...
I'll wait till the presentation and then we'll make some comments.
Okay. Mr. Alt, are you available?
I am, Madam Chair, and always at your service.
Well, I tried to give it to Toffinelli and Guaramendi, but they punted to you.
I don't recognize that jacket, Al.
I should have worn my Christmas jacket, although I don't know if it would be safe for all of our viewers to see all those bright colors.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to explain to the board and to the members of our public that may be viewing today the progress of the Facilities Ad Hoc Committee. I will go through the staff report in detail because it's, it pretty much speaks for itself. But as the board is aware, the committee was initiated in 2019 and Supervisors Toffinelli and Guaramendi have worked closely with staff over the last two years. We've met generally monthly unless there was some schedule conflict that came up. And so our monthly meetings over the last two years have resulted in what we've documented in the staff report of several of the key projects having been completed or nearly complete at this point in time. As you'll see by the staff report, the old jail demolition is completed. As you also see, when you come to our parking lot, there's quite a blank space where that building used to reside. We've also fortunately completed the museum roof as well, and we are within weeks of completing the HVAC project as we speak. There are a couple of projects that are in very much the preliminary stages. As you will note from the staff report, the district attorney's office and the animal services building still remain as significant, outstanding projects that will continue to need some attention. And so before I go into any more detail about any particular project, what I'd like to do is give opportunity for either of the supervisors on the committee or the board to ask questions if they so choose, and then we can discuss the remainder of the staff report after that.
So my understanding is that the ad hoc committee is no longer meeting? The timeframe is up?
Well, that's one of the discussion points, Madam Chair. As counsel has made us aware and Supervisor Mills asked several meetings ago, I apologize, I don't even remember which meeting, the purpose and the duration of an ad hoc. And so it has been in our reports that the, there were really two ways to end the ad hoc committee. It was either completion of projects or to term out on, on date. And the board extended the ad hoc and their responsibilities through December of this year. So one of the questions after reviewing the projects is what is the pleasure of the board on moving forward, whether or not this ad hoc or a different ad hoc configuration would, would best serve the board or if there's a potential of a standing committee or whether the board would want these projects built into their priorities and monitor them regularly through board meetings.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or clarification? Mr. Stopper?
Just for a little bit of clarity, the, with the extension, we've culminated in the entire length that a standing ad hoc committee can, can be put together. So at this point, our choice is to either do a more permanent style committee that's underneath the Brown Act or, I mean, what are our options?
If I may, Supervisor Stopper, there's no set statutory timeframe for the duration of an ad hoc committee. That said, it is not supposed to exist indefinitely. It is supposed to exist for either a finite period of time and/or for a discrete subject. So it's my opinion that if we wanted to just continue to have a facilities ad hoc committee into next year and potentially add projects, that would not properly be an ad hoc committee and it should be converted to a standing committee. But that's only one of the options. Another option, as CAO Alt mentioned, would be to disband the committee altogether and, and then the board could either receive updates on facilities process, projects and kind of manage that process, or the board could choose to form a new ad hoc committee. My recommendation would be that it be given a finite amount of time and/or a specific project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Sarah, stay on the line. So if they did, we did form a new ad hoc committee, though, it would have to have a new set of parameters for the tasks at hand. We cannot simply take the existing tasks and just fold them in to a new ad hoc committee.
That's correct, Supervisor Mills. It would be my recommendation that if, the board could certainly choose to do that, but in that case, I would just recommend that it abide by the parameters of the Brown Act and become a standing committee.
And considering the success of the standing, of the ad hoc committee, and there are other things that may need to be included, such as the jail and other issues that come up from time to time, a standing committee is just to put the additional public noticing in place and have a regular meeting time. That's all.
That's correct. It would just involve, yes, noticing an agenda and the meeting would be open to the public.
And minutes and clerking, so that, that's an additional workload, but that certainly is within reason to be able to be done.
But for the rest of the board, it may give them the latitude that they need so as a specific project rears its head, that they could take it on without a whole lot of additional finagling, if you want to call it that, to get it done. It just sort of would add it to the list. But I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the value in disbanding the whole concept completely simply because we're out of time.
Yes, and Supervisor Mills, you're, you're absolutely correct. If the goal of the board is to have a, I mean, does that, a sort of a standing committee that's, that's tasked with reviewing a variety of facilities projects as they may arise, that would be the way to do it.
Mr. Toffinelli, did you have anything?
At our last ad hoc committee meeting, we discussed this quite extensively. We also, what's remaining on the list, we talked a little bit about, but we did have quite a conversation about the animal shelter and of course, an item coming up next with the grand jury report. And we were, we were talking about getting, trying to take that one on and try and get something that's shovel-ready. Again, we had a plan that was never adopted by the board when we were going to partner up with the Friends of the Animals, whatever, I forget the name of that organization. And they had plans, extensive plans drawn up. They were quite extensive, but we talked about maybe paring those down and presenting something to the board and at least have it adopted by the board, and then it would be shovel-ready in case any money came up in the near future. be shovel-ready in case any money came up in the near future, federal dollars or state dollars become available to at least get that built and then put this, that continually comes to us through the grand jury, completed. So that was one thing that we just talked about and wanted to put to the front of the list. Whether it was a Brown Act, we go through a Brown Act meeting or not, we kind of kicked it around and we decided that it really doesn't matter, that we felt that this committee or some type of this committee should at least go forward, simply because it actually did some progress on, again, on projects that sat for a while and just talked about but never accomplished. So I think that's where we left it at our last meeting. Jack, do you want to, is that correct?
I think you're correct, Gary. You know, frankly, I think this item is a classic example, we're fixing something that's not broke, but, you know, I'm glad it was brought to our attention that it was not compliant, and we'll fix it. So I think, as Gary pointed out, you know, there's a couple, this committee really did get some things going, but I think it's ready to evolve. Gary and I have talked about, Gary mentioned the animal shelter at the Deputy District Attorney's Building. We've talked before in this board about Health and Human Services. You know, if we have to come to a, if we have to become a standing committee, all right, it's more administrative work. Apologize for that, but we'll keep moving forward. But I think that Gary's point about trying to make sure that we've got these projects on the shelf, so that when money comes available, the infrastructure or stimulus or grants down the road, we could just pull them off the shelf and say, hey, we've got an animal shelter ready to go, we've got a District Attorney Building ready to go, all we need is money, and we could get this happening. So I'd like to see us evolve into that type of conversation, because I think Gary and I figured out how to do that, it works pretty well, and I think we ought to continue in one form or another, and if this board decides to go with a formal standing committee, I would volunteer to be on it.
Well, I guess I look at it differently. I feel that when we established the ad hoc, it was because we had a need at that time. Excuse me. Whether it was real or perceived doesn't matter, we had a need, and the ad hoc committee filled that need and got us going. I feel that the board will set the priorities of what we think the projects should be, not the committee, be it standing or ad hoc, and that we then hold the CAO accountable for moving the projects forward and reporting out. Like Mr. Toffenelli said, you know, the animal shelter's been on the grand jury for years and years, and we do nothing. And whether it's a grant, or we just say we're going to eat the costs and we're going to start budgeting money in the general fund to, in the next two or three years, pay to build an animal shelter. I don't think we need a committee to do that. I think if we set what the priorities are, we hold the CAO accountable, we're going in to be doing strategic planning, and if this is, if these projects we deem are critical, then that's what we say. And then they report out whatever timeframe, quarterly, every six months, however we ask, and there's key ones, which are high-ticket items like the shelter and the auditors, excuse me, and the District Attorney's Office. Then there's ones that are not as high-ticket, such as maybe the auditor's office or the SO, and there could be special funding for some and maybe not for others. And we can go on, say, well, we're going to keep looking for money for the shelter, and then another 15, 20 years, we're still getting a grand jury report. You know, at some point, the board has to say we're going to build it. But I don't think we need a standing committee or an ad hoc committee. I think, I'm taking what Supervisor Guaramendi said, saying we've evolved and we can move forward. I don't think moving forward means that we have to have one or two supervisors on a committee for facilities. So, Mr. Guaramendi?
I just want to respond to your comments, Madam Chair. My experience, what's measured is done.
Pardon?
What is measured is done.
Correct.
When you have two supervisors standing on a committee, asking what happened in the last 30 days on this project, it's being measured, so things are getting done. Second, you're correct. Items like the animal shelter have been on, the animal shelter, prison demolition have been on the books for years. The difference is, some of them are getting done now. I'm afraid that if we don't continue with our momentum, they won't get done. You're correct, and the method that you're suggesting is the exact method that's been in existence for at least a decade, and nothing happened. So now, something's happening, I don't think we ought to slide back.
But we have, we have different staff now. We have a different CAO, we have a different board, and we can, we can just say that this is how we're going to, one of the things we're going to evaluate you on is projects and how they get done. And we can do it for almost anything. You know, we don't have a program that we're all using for, like, was it ITech or Ttech or the one that's the building department's using, that maybe other departments can use. We're not micromanaging those. I think that we put together what we think the goals are and the strategic plan, and we say, here it is, and we want you reporting. I don't think we need to have supervisors on all those, on committees for all those things. And even though we didn't do it right, or we didn't do it well 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, or two years ago, I'm looking at moving forward and thinking that we have the staff now that can do it, and that understand the goals of where the board is. And if we set the goals that we want the auditor's office done in 2021, then we hold staff accountable for getting the auditors done. And if they can't, they come and say, for us to do the auditor's office, we're going to need X amount of money, and we can get it done by December 2021. Animal shelter, here are the different options for the animal shelter, here's the different funding mechanisms, where do you want to go, board? Because it's not the ad hoc committee or the standing committee that makes that decision, it's the board's decision.
Madam Chair, you're correct. The board sets the priority, there's no two ways about it. But I think that, I think that it is, I think you're incorrect, I respectfully disagree, that going back to the system as it existed before is going to move things forward more expeditiously. I think people like the CAO, facilities, even purchasing, it helps them to have a committee of supervisors who are pushing on this stuff. It gives them backing to move things forward and get things accomplished. Obviously, we disagree, and that's okay, that's why there's five of us.
Okay. Mr. Stoppa?
When we put this together two years ago, it was because that things were not getting completed, let's just say in a timely manner. You know, there was a lot, you know, the old jail demolition had been on the books, I believe, since 2014. And, you know, I want to thank, you know, the two supervisors along with working with staff for expeditiously getting that done. I think that shows the success and how the ad hoc committee operated. Personally, you know, I agree, on one hand, I do agree with Madam Chair, that, no, their job isn't to micromanage, but I don't believe that's what they've been doing. I think they've been sitting down as a working committee through an ad hoc name, working with facilities, using their experience, and supporting, supporting staff in moving forward with that, which I think, I don't want to say the wrong set of words, but which, you know, empowers them to work forward and has been beneficial in doing so. You know, and just going over this list, because we've got the discussion summary here, we got priorities, we got stuff that's like to be determined, and then there's recommendations here. There's something that's not on this that we've discussed, that I do believe needs to be brought up in the future when we do our priorities, and that, I believe, the new cell at the dump, or the solid waste facility, should be part of facilities. And that's something that's definitely to be considered. With that, I'm amenable to how we would move forward, and I think it's good to have a few supervisors working with staff as working supervisors. I think that's healthy for the relationship with the board and staff, not in a capacity that's micromanaging, but to work with them. That, you know, I think that builds a relationship from top to bottom that we're somewhat looking for when we were discussing what we're going to do with our strategic plan. And that, you know, I think that shows them that we're vested in the work they do.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, Marita, respectively, I kind of disagree with you. Well, I'm not kind, I do disagree with you. My definition of micromanaging is not a couple of supervisors on a committee that meets once a month. Micromanaging would be after that meeting, continuously calling staff and telling them to do this, do that, do this. That didn't happen. We met once a month, we got over where we were, what our plans were, if we could help them in any way, and we went forward. I'm going to take you back to when the jail was being built, and we were having an issue with the jail. And I became part of a committee with Jeanie Boyce, that we met with Doug from Kitchell once a month to go over where we were with the jail, and it progressed very well. And then I didn't, I lost an election and didn't come back, but it kept it moving in decisions, helping them, Kitchell, and making it go forward when we were having these big problems, if you remember. We had, we had one of the contractors under contract for the steel portion of it file bankruptcy, and that all fell apart. We had a problem with the concrete people, too, and some of the panels didn't work. And so when they told me, because I had my background, and Jeanie Boyce, and we all met and formed a little bit of committee, it helped and it worked forward. That's what's happening here. I don't see any micromanaging, again, either from Jack or myself, meeting once a month with staff and giving support or discussing and having a discussion on which way we should go, or what we should do to get something completed here. And that's exactly what was happening, and we would report back to you guys quarterly. I just, the micromanage part of it, I just disagree with you on that. That's not what was happening. There was no daily calls or even weekly calls saying you need to do this, you need to do that, and it just didn't happen. To me, that's micromanaging, so...
That's not how I meant it. Mr. Guaramendi?
Madam Chair, if you're concerned about not being a part of any of these decisions that are going on, as we, after we prioritize what we're actually doing, you know, obviously, anybody's welcome to come to these meetings. If you would like to serve on the committee, I would gladly defer to you, if that's something that would help us go forward, because I think that this is important if we want to accomplish these things. If we ever want to have an animal shelter, or we ever want to get the district attorney, we need to continually measure. And I agree with Supervisor Toffenelli. I didn't call up, there was no micromanaging. It's an update, and it takes less than an hour, but it matters.
Okay. It's not my being on it or not on it, it's the concept. And the concept for me is, we needed it at the time, for, and I go based on the history that you and Supervisor Toffenelli had when we formed it, based on whatever happened before Mr. Stoppa and I got on the board. And that's fine, but to me, that mission was accomplished, we've moved forward from that, that the facilities, the CAO, understand the direction of the board. I mean, so why not have an IT project committee, standing committee or ad hoc committee? You know, at some point, and I know there are counties that do, they have a finance committee, and a facilities committee, and a land use committee, and board members are divvied up by those. I guess I have the confidence in staff, because the board's been pretty clear, we've moved past where we were when it was established, to letting them do what it is to meet the priorities established by the board. That's why I guess I don't think we need an ad hoc or standing committee. And if they start falling down on the job, then there's ramifications for that. So I guess I'm pretty much by myself on that, because I don't think we need a, an IT project committee either, or a land use committee, subcommittee. And I think if you have ad hoc, it should be for a specific, one thing, like, I think it was the jail that you and Supervisor Toffenelli had talked about and why it was So given that I seem to be on the losing end of this discussion, I'd rather see than a facilities standing committee, not just, okay, we're going to have an ad hoc committee for animal shelter and DA, and then that's the end of the project, or the end of the timeframe, and then we start all over again. If this is that important to this board, then I guess I'd rather see it as a standing committee, understanding it takes more staff time to do it, and it's a little more bureaucratic because of the Brown Act. And we can't seem to get around that like you can with the ad hoc, so...
Madam Chair?
What? I mean, yes?
Maybe never mind. With all due respect to the board discussion, I appreciate where all of the supervisors are coming from, and I might offer a solution that, well, really, the intention of this for December was a report out of where we are on the projects. I didn't mean to drive the discussion down the road of, do we disband the ad hoc or not in this particular month. I might suggest, we know that in January for the study session, we are going to talk about board priorities and CAO goals, and it might be a nice mesh at that time, if I have opportunity to bring a little broader picture back to the board about facilities and some of the concerns. We have very significant, high-dollar concerns at the existing jail facility, we have other major projects within the county operations for facilities, along with the projects that you see that are still on the list to be considered with the DA's building and the animal services. So I think I can bring a clearer picture in our study session about a priority for the board, maybe around facilities, and us continuing to move forward and improving our facilities. And that might also include then how we might consider financing some of these, and a larger strategic finance plan, which at the end of the day, that's really where staff needs the support. If you give us a project like the old jail demolition, and you give us $350,000 to complete the project, we know how to fulfill those projects, but there's some tough questions that need to be addressed in our discussion around how we would line up our financing, or how we would, whether it's financing or just our resources on how we're going to address existing issues, whether or not we're going to bring our facilities back onto the main government campus, or we're going to continue to have leases spread around the county. So those are really important questions that I think we need board support of two members, so that it helps take us in the right direction, so when we come to five members and make recommendation, we've had board thinking in some of that prioritization. I would like to reiterate what both of the supervisors have said, that are on the ad hoc, and there hasn't been micromanaging. We bring issues to them, they support the work, very much support the work of staff, and have been very positive to work with. So while I appreciate that, I don't think we need an ad hoc for very specific projects like the jail demolition, we do need some more strategic... like the jail demolition, we do need some more strategic thinking to help guide staff in how we may go about prioritizing the things that need to come to the board, and ultimately will end up in our budget development process, and will heavily influence the budget that I bring forward for C A O recommended. So it might give us an opportunity then to not necessarily make all the decisions today, but give us time to consider some different ways to move these things forward and discuss them more thoroughly in the January study session.
Okay, now that I've had my opinion deleted, do you have anything else you want to say?
No.
No. Mr. Ghermandi. Oh, well, I do, but that's okay. Mr. Mills.
I think we're beating up a horse right now that might have to change come January.
God, I hope we don't beat up a horse, I'll have to call Animal Services.
And I don't have a horse at all. The point is, is that there are many, many things that need to be addressed in facilities, and there will always be things to address. Now, it's just a matter of whether or not the board wants to, as Mr. Ghermandi has said, is to be measurable, and that there be a way for at least a couple of supervisors to have some oversight. I know that in management, if you don't have somebody checking on you on a regular basis, you have a tendency to kind of push it off because it isn't a priority for you. You've got other things that are more critical. So I know how that works in business, and I'm sure it works the same way in government. I would hope that you will, the board will consider maybe not an ad hoc, but a standing committee to continue to move a lot of these critical projects forward, find the funding necessary to do it. But that's something that you'll have to wait for January, I think, to.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Toffenelli, do you have anything else to?
No.
Okay, this is just a report on the ad hoc committee. And if I'm hearing the board and C A O all that, we will be discussing how it will be established when we go into strategic plan or into preliminary budget hearings midterm. Is that correct, Mr. All?
Madam Chair, my recommendation would be that along with priorities and goal setting in the January study session, that we could take this item up as well and consider it along with the priorities that the board considers at that date.
Okay, thank, is there any other comments on the recommendation moving forward? Are there any public comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Michael Hatfield, he would like to speak.
Okay, please. Mr. Hatfield.
Hey, good afternoon, Board. It's Michael Hatfield from the District Attorney's Office. D A Yook wanted to speak to this item today, but she's unavailable at the moment. First, I'd like to thank both Supervisor Ghermandi and Toffenelli for all of the work that they've done on this ad hoc committee. We've seen significant progress in the projects moving forward under the ad hoc, such as the jail demo, museum roof, H B A C, but specifically the programming phase of the new district attorney's building. Our concern is that disbanding this ad hoc will take away the momentum that we've had over the last year or so, two years. And right now, we're finished with programming, and we're moving into the design phase. If we, one example, like the design phase being held up, is that right now there's $1.2 million in the judicial construction fund that is available for the design, but that is, we can't use until the $14,000 that was spent out of it is replaced. So we would like to actually see that $14,000 replaced so that we can move forward with this design phase. And having an ad hoc committee with supervisors on it can help make sure that those types of things move forward, and that that progress keeps happening, and that we don't lose that momentum. So I think either a new or a continued ad hoc could ensure that all of, that that momentum is maintained. If we, if you plan to delay it until January, then that could lead to issues with trying to get that money replaced so that we can get going on this design phase. So I believe our office supports an ad hoc committee. And Supervisors Ghermandi and Toffenelli, you've both been amazing on it. We would support both of you, or even any other supervisors. But disbanding a committee, or only having it, or reviewing a financial piece, a lot of stuff gets left behind. And right now, with the momentum on completing all these projects that have been sitting around for a long time, we would like to see some type of ad hoc or standing committee, specifically for at least the portion of the D A's building going through design and identifying financing, because after that point, then it is just construction, and it's just doing R F Ps. So really, for our portion of the facilities ad hoc committee, it's only, the only remaining parts are really design and the financial part. So we do support the ad hoc, and we hope that it continues.
Mr. Hatfield, on behalf of the board, the D A's office is a priority, whether there's an ad hoc, a standing committee, or some other option. So you can please tell D A that for us. As for the construction fund, there are several permutations involved with that. But thank you very much for representing the district attorney. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
No other public comments.
Okay, thank you. So, C A O, we will be bringing this back in January?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to item 16. authorize the board chair to sign the response to the grand jury report. Well, I have changes. Some are grammar changes, but if you would like me to go ahead and make the changes as I see fit, I'm more than happy to do that, unless you all have any comments on any of the items.
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear your changes.
Some of them are grammatical. I don't think you want me to go over the grammatical changes.
Just the conceptual.
Of which I have quite a few.
A deadline on.
Were you adding to?
Pardon? I have lots of grammatical changes.
No, that's okay.
That are, that are made, which I won't go, which I'll just share with staff.
Well, the grammatical changes, are you changing words or just spelling?
I'm changing grammar.
So you're changing words.
Changing grammar. Yeah, like for board or B O S, you use board or B O S. I mean, I don't think you care about that. The board wishes to think, as if we don't want to think, you use action verbs, the board thinks. I don't think these are things that you care about. However notwithstanding, it's redundant, strap. You don't want me to go through those. If you want a copy, I'm more happy to show you. My concerns is, of course, in the animal shelter. I think we need to be more definitive on what it is we're going to do. I don't think.
What are you?
I don't think we are.
I'm going to drill down on that.
You know.
What page are you at?
I don't know, take any page. Take, take one, page two, page three. I mean, we're just sort of going, we're just going around saying the same thing we've said for years. And unless we want to say that we are going to make a commitment.
Madam Chair, are you talking on the board response, recommendation one, recommendation two?
Okay, finding, I mean.
Let's go through which one you would like to change and see where we come out of.
Well, I'm just saying care on finding one, care of animals and the staff, not just the animals. Recommendation requires further analysis. By March 21, the C A O will provide consideration. Well, we need to be more definitive. We are going, we will be putting money into the budget for some of that, not, well, we must, we may, and so forth, for capital improvement projects. We're not very definitive on that, on page two. It will not, you know, I mean, I just.
Madam Chair, maybe if it's not due today, maybe this is simply.
It's due the end of, this, when it's due, it's due the end of the month?
Chris, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So. Just by way, a little bit of background. In prior years, the grand jury report is typically released all at the same time, in the end of June, and hence County and other responses are due collectively at certain intervals. In this particular year, as a result of COVID, the grand jury was held over, and so we actually received these three reports on three different dates. So the only response that is in this draft, and I highlight for you that this is in fact a draft, but is nearly a jumping off point, and we clearly are happy to take any and all board direction, and can rework that into the final response. But of the responses that are included here, only the disaster preparedness response is due prior to the next board meeting. It's due on January 5th. So all other responses could actually be brought back to the board after we've had an opportunity to work in for feedback from this session on January 12th, as the animal services and the veteran services responses aren't due to the court until January 13th and January 17th, respectively.
Maybe rather than.
Yeah.
Maybe rather than us micromanaging this process?
It's still.
Sorry, I was going to say, Madam Chair, maybe rather than micromanaging this process, because I know we're all against micromanaging today. We, we just take on that one item and bring the rest back, if you want to go through that.
Okay, then, if we do the one that's due January 5th, I had a question on page four and five. The jury recommends the annual proclamation on address identification month. If I remember correctly, and maybe Supervisor Toffenelli can remember more than I, before a building permit's issued, it has to have a visible address. Is that still the case?
I believe so, yes.
So that needs to be in there. That is in, I thought, the code or the approval process before the building department gives a final permit, the address has to be marked. So declaring address identification month is maybe a feel-good thing, but that doesn't get it done. So I, if, if we're still doing that, if the building department's doing, still doing that before they issue a final building permit, maybe that should be in there. That's something that we're doing that's taking action. Mr. Stoffer?
That's, that's a good point, Ms. Callaway, but what about the house without an address in front of, that was built in 1963?
Yeah, what about it?
That, that, that's what this is trying to say, is like, we want them to put addresses up on those homes. I do agree, I do agree with you that you are correct. New buildings are required to have an address out to, out in front of the entrance prior to finalization of the building. But this is more so addressing older properties that haven't been through the process since that was made a law or an ordinance within Calaveras County.
I go back to Mr. Waller. Mr. Waller, had we had an address committee or an address unit, and we went through. So ever since Mr. Waller was really an advocate of addressing, and we're still talking about it, however long Mr. Waller's been gone, 20-some years. And so, yeah, we're going to have address identification. If anything, it would be something we could work through with our respective fire departments, because they're the ones, I mean, and that's fine. I, I'm okay with putting a feel-good thing. I just think that if we are doing something, like not issuing a final building permit until this is done, it is a valid, valid concern, then we should be giving the county credit that we are doing something versus a proclamation, this is address correction month, or address put up a sign month. Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, you know, I got to remember back in the mid to late eighties, where in the fire district, we carried paper plates, white paper plates and rocks in the fire engines for the purpose of turn right at the paper plate in the middle of the night, because that was the only way you could find a place up in Murphy's Pines, as an example. If the, if the board wants to bring forth some type of a ruling whereby, you know, having the fire districts work with the county, because they're really the ones that are recipients of bad addressing, you know, do we chase the smoke in the sky kind of thing to find that location, which has happened. You know, let's not just talk about new permits, as you talked about, Mr. Stoffer. Let's talk about how do we get a uniform addressing system going? I know in many Midwestern locations, there, there is a standard address sign that everybody has to have. It's not even an option. And if it's, if it's, they can't afford it, then the fire district or somebody puts it together and gets it signed on that property. So we can talk about the new, but let's talk about the existing, which is really where the serious problem is.
You know, and good points on both yours. And I'm, there's no point in discrediting, you're absolutely right, Madam Chair, you know, to the point in new buildings. Yes, just a feel-good thing, like you say, I agree, I agree with where you're coming from. I think Dennis Mills has a good point, and I think when it went, you know, I wasn't paying as much attention when, a few decades ago, when Mr. Waller was on that, you know, heading up that committee and everything. But I do recall that fire districts were working with the county on that committee. And I do recall that at least in McComme Hill, they're going out advocating, and they had, they had a process for getting the type of signs that Mr. Mills is bringing up. So maybe you're, you're, you're bringing up a very good point, and these are ways to respond that we can address this issue, that the grand jury didn't necessarily think of, that are better ways to address the issue than just a feel-good thing of saying, look, this is national address day month, you know? These are actually things to resolve the situation. And, you know, I, I, you bring up a good point. That's all, that's why I have to say it.
I would agree with Supervisor Stoffer. I mean, every fire district in my, every fire department in my district has a sign program. I mean, they, they're pushing it all the time. I think our role is to be in support of them, as they are the fire folks. So I would, I would move to accept it as it is.
And we, but we do do something, and we're not being given credit in here for something we're doing.
Truman once said, it's amazing what can get done when you don't care who gets the credit, so.
But this is a grand jury report for us to comment on. And if we say that the building department is doing something, does that not give some kudos to the building department?
Yes.
And to our working.
I think it's not a productive thing for us to try to wordsmith this and write in new stuff.
in new stuff as we sit here in the diocese. I think if you want to make another cut at it, I'm happy to come back for a special meeting.
We can't do that. I wouldn't ask you all to, if you all want to. But that's fine. So we're going to just approve the, what's your number? That's the only part of the grand jury report we're going to approve today? Or did you want to approve all of them minus the grammatical errors?
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I read this again during lunch, and, and I saw some of the grammatical errors. I didn't probably pick off all of them that you had. But other than that, I would be willing to approve it as it is today.
Okay, there's a motion by Supervisor Mills. Oh, is there any public comment additional on this?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Mills. Second.
Madam Chair, I have a respect for you. If you would like me to make a substitute motion to just accept that one section so you could rework the rest of it, I'd be willing to bring forward a substitute motion.
There's a substitute motion, which needs to be dealt with before the primary motions. There are second on the substitute motion.
It's up to you, ma'am.
Dies for lack of a second. Let's go back to the primary motion. There's a motion by Supervisor Mills to approve it as is.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes on a 4-1 Supervisor Callaway in the negative. Okay, thank you. Just editorially, when something goes out with our signature on it, it needs to be grammatically correct, that's all I'm saying, and spelling correct. All right, let's go to supervisor announcements. Mr. Mills, we'll start with you. Do you have any announcements?
Well, Madam Chair, I know that there are two of you who have been in the same position. And my service to the public has gone on since the early 80s. I will continue to serve in whatever way is needed, and depending on the condition or health of my wife, of course. But service is something that, if you've been at it a long time, and I know many of you have, you, you will continue to have that within you to want to help your people around you. So thank everybody for the successes that we've had in the last four years.
Thank you for your participation in that, Mr. Mills. You've been quite an education for me to work with.
Thank you. Thank you. I will continue to serve in whatever way I can.
Thank you. Mr. Toffinelli?
Yeah, I want to, I want to tell Dennis that it's been a pleasure working with you for the last four years, not only here, but the other committees that we both belong to during the course of those four years. You always come prepared, and that's, that's a good thing. I've seen a lot of other times where certain supervisors didn't come prepared on anything, even these board meetings. But it reflects about you and how you feel about doing the job, and it's been, again, a real pleasure. I'm sorry the COVID thing has hit us. Normally, we would have a little reception thing going on, and, you know, the department heads and other people would come and have a cup of coffee, a piece of cupcake or something, and say goodbye. Unfortunately, the times that we are right now, it's not going to happen. So, but again, I wanted to thank you for your service and tell you again, it's been a pleasure working with you over the last four years.
Supervisor Guermandi?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Okay, I, I think I'm going to go before you.
Okay.
I'm going to just take that prerogative.
Yes, ma'am.
Since I've gotten beat up so much today, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a, Mountain County's, their pollution control Zoom meeting this week. And that's it. Mr. Stopper, did you have anything you'd like to do today?
If you don't mind, I'm going to go to the other side of the podium. I'm here to speak to the board.
Thank you.
Not, not sincere, a piece of fruit that you have to throw. He must be back in afterwards.
No, 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 no.
Supervisor Mills, Ms. Callaway's put some great thought into this. It takes a special person to stand up and do service. You know, throughout this time, you know, we don't all see eye to eye, but you know, there's, there's a vast amount of respect for the time you put in for this county. And, and I think Supervisor Toffinelli put it very well. You've always come prepared. You, you do, you do your homework, you know? It doesn't matter which side of the boat you're on, you've done your due diligence, and there's something to say for that. On this, she's got a Post-it note here that says consent agenda. You know, it's, you know, we, we need a couple fingers on it pulling. I mean, that's the only thing that's missing there. Below it is a budget book with a lot of. Yeah, no, no, what are they called? The?
Stickums.
Stickums, you know? There, there's another Post-it note, natural bridges, you know? You took some good steps this year towards something that, I mean, you're truly working in benefit for the community. And, you know, as someone that's been going there since I was very young, you know, it's something close to all our heart, the natural resources of our county. They need to be preserved. And then there's a marijuana leaf with a half cross through it. You know, some of us think there's still hope for you yet. You've stayed solid on your position on that. There's something to be respected of that. You know, in half your time, it was banned throughout this process. You know, we appreciate the time you've given to Calaveras County. It's something to be valued, and it's something that won't be forgotten, Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just glad I got to take off my mask for a few minutes also.
Is there anything else you want to say, Mr. Stopper?
Thank you.
I meant, you know.
Oh, you know what?
You did a good job.
The other things, you know, are small. This is, you know, Dennis's moment, so we would, that's, and, you know, this is on behalf of the entire board.
Thank you.
Especially, I mean, we really did put some good thought.
Oh, my goodness. I don't remember you taking that picture, lady. Now, we have, we're surrounded with a great staff, and we always have to keep that in mind, that the many successes that this board has experienced over the last four years of my time here is truly because of the dedication of the staff that we have that surrounds us. And I think Josh Pack put that very well. And we always have to be appreciative of those people who take the extra time and go the extra mile to benefit, to the benefit of the community as a whole. And we always have to keep that in mind. What is our purpose? Is government? And why are we here? And it isn't to serve a personal agenda. It's just to do our, as you say, our due diligence, to kind of be sure to work it all through from all sides and come up with a cognitive reasoning as to why you decide in a way that you do. And all of you, I think, I've learned a lot from you as well. So very appreciative of Ms. Callaway and her leadership on the board as a chair this year. Kept an even hand, kind of kept control of us to some degree. But it is appreciated that even though you may be on the other side of an issue, you still take the time to respect the other person for the work that they're doing and what they're trying to represent as well in representing their people. So thank you.
On behalf of the board and the staff of Calaveras, we thank you. Ms. Simpson, do you have anything you'd like to share? CAO Walt?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Susan? Ms. Edwards?
Uh, no, we're here.
So on behalf of the board, to the staff of Calaveras, we really wish you as joyous a holiday as all of us can take. And this meeting stands adjourned as a meeting, and we recess into closed session. We'll take a five-minute recess, maybe 10.